Good evening and welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. I'm gonna read some instructions here so I don't get anything wrong. Tonight, all council members and staff are participating remotely, virtually. We do appreciate your patience as we work through this process. We've done a few of these meetings now, but we continue to run into unanticipated snags here and there, so please bear with us if that happens this evening. To help our audience follow along, I will state each section of the agenda so you know where we are. We are streaming live on our virtual engagement hub, which is accessible through the virtual engagement hub link on the front page of the city website. We also have an option for the public to listen live by phone by dialing 855-925-2801 and entering the code 9553. We are also broadcasting live on the city's YouTube channel, Charter Cable Channel 193, and on AT&amp;T Uverse Channel 99. For those of you out there today, welcome. For tonight's meeting, we have also added the option for people to call in and comment live during the meeting. To call in and comment live, use the same call-in number I've already mentioned, 855-925-2801, and the same meeting code, 9553. Your phone will be muted and you will hear the meeting live. After the welcome message, you will be prompted to press star for more options. Next, you have three options. If you would like to join the speaker queue for a specific item, please press 3. If you would like to comment on another agenda item, please wait until that item is being discussed, and then press 3. If you're watching the meeting through your television or the livestream while you're listening to the meeting by phone, please be sure to turn down the volume on your television or computer. Please also be aware, there is a broadcast and livestream delay of a few seconds. I will now go through and introduce all the council members who are participating virtually. Please make sure, council members, to mute your microphone if you're not speaking, and same for staff who are on this virtual meeting. When you'd like to speak, unmute your microphone. All right, council and staff, as I call your name, please say a quick hello. Vice Mayor Whistler.
Good evening.
Councilman Haynes.
Hello.
Councilman Kapoor.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Good evening, everyone.
Councilwoman Smith.
Hello.
Councilman Young.
Good evening.
City Manager Deborah Campbell.
Hello.
City Attorney Brad Branham.
Hello, everyone.
And City Clerk Maggie Burlison.
Hello.
To begin our evening, I would ask that everyone stand wherever you are to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Tonight, we do not have any proclamations, so we're gonna move directly into the consent agenda. We have a pretty short consent agenda. If you would like to comment live on the consent agenda, please call in and listen to the meeting by phone, and remember to turn down your television or computer if you're watching the meeting. Television and livestream will be a few seconds behind, as I've mentioned before. Listening by phone, you'll experience the meeting in real time. After the welcome message, again, you will be prompted to press star for more options. Next, you'll have three options. If you'd like to join the speaker queue for this item, that being the consent agenda, please press 3. If you'd like to comment on another public hearing item, please wait until the item is being discussed. Again, listening by phone means you hear the meeting without the four to 10-second delay. Do any council members have any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I wanted to give some shout-outs and thank-yous to people who participated in the installation of the mural. Is that appropriate now?
Yes, please.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to first start off by thanking all the artists who used their time and talent to design this installation. Asheville native Jenny Pickens, Dr. Joseph Pearson, Marie Cochran, as well as other Black, Indigenous, and people of color who found this project a worthy way to affirm that in Asheville, Black lives indeed matter. This is our contribution to the overall and local movement. I know that initially, there were some concerns about the cost of this project, but I'm happy to say that we worked very hard to cut the budget, and we continue to raise money, funds privately, private donations, and that's been spearheaded by the Asheville Area Arts Council. Thank you. And thank you also to the City of Asheville for helping to facilitate the installation of the mural at no cost to taxpayers, other than waiving a few basic fees. This shows that this project is a, it does have true community buy-in. So, I also would like to speak to some of the criticism that's going around the community that states this project just purely performative and a symbolic gesture. I want us all to understand that the deliberate act to decimate Black progress through destruction of business, homeownership, schools, it also included the erasure of Blackness from the public's view, especially in this city, from the tourist's view, so that Asheville can continue to build the brand of being a picturesque travel destination without having to answer questions about how it played a part in shaping some of the conditions of the Black population. Now, the erasure of Blackness and the silencing of our total humanity is what systemic racism and oppression feeds off of. Therefore, we make ourselves as artists, as parents, as songwriters, as teachers, creators, healers, elected officials as well. We are highly determined to tell our stories and make sure that the hearts and minds are impacted by what we sing, by what we say, how we act, and what we make visible on canvas. In this case, what we make visible on the streets of Asheville. So, my hope is that we use this moment as an opportunity to look to the future of Asheville's healing based on truth and reconciliation. So, with that said, I see this mural as a placeholder that provides context to the space and time while the larger conversations and decisions are being made. Thank you again.
Thank you.
No, Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna tell Councilwoman Smith, thank you for your work on this project. Appreciate it. I appreciate you.
Thank you, yes. With that, I'm gonna take your comments. Shneke, it'll also be a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is that all right?
I'm so moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If we have any live callers, staff, could you let us know who would like to comment on the consent agenda, the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, we have one caller in the queue.
Okay, please proceed.
I'm a Asheville resident. I've been up here long enough to remember what y'all did to Jerry Williams. I've been up here long enough to know what you guys did to Johnny Rush. I think this is a hollow, meaningless gesture. If y'all really care about the community, start with the reparations, and by that, I mean defund the Asheville Police Department. Esther Manahime resigns. Chief David Zach, quit your job. Give Asheville back to the residents, not the tourism board, and let Black people be the ones to lead the charge. We all know what y'all did to Eagle Street, on top of all these other communities up here, so I think we're all kinda done. Quit your job, Esther.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, do we have any other callers?
No, there are no other callers in the line.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. I will need to take a roll call vote, as we will have to do for every vote in the, on the agenda today because of the rules the legislature passed that apply during these virtual meetings. So, I will begin with Vice Mayor Whistler.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank, um, do we know a timeline for the installation of the mural, just so we can say that?
Um, to be announced later. I think after a meeting we have late on this week, we'll let folks know, the folks that need to know, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to presentations and reports, we have one presentation on the agenda tonight. It's the manager's report on the 30, 60, 90-day plan from City Manager Deborah Campbell. Ms. Campbell, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, staff, and those who have joined us on this meeting. While the presentation is coming up, I want to, you can go to the next slide, please. My presentation is gonna consist of an update on what we have called a 30, 60, 90-day work plan. And I think this is really a pretty good transition between the discussion that you all just had about the mural and some very tangible things in terms of the longer conversation that I believe Councilmember Smith talked about in response to the Black Asheville Demands Coalition's request. Next slide. So, what essentially this 30, 60, 90-day work plan is, it was developed for us to make sure that our entire organization knew about the demands that have been made of local government, in particular, the City of Asheville, and for us to be able to kinda manage the initiatives and to make sure that the community understood that we were serious about creating a work plan and activities for us to advance this conversation that will be the beginning. It definitely will not be the end of the conversations in 90 days. And so, essentially, what this work plan does is outline duties and responsibilities and timelines and various groups, including city departments, city council, and advisory committees, and assigning responsibilities for advancing these efforts. Next slide, please. So, this essentially kinda represents, it's just reflective of the initiatives that we want to accomplish in 30 days. Obviously, I don't expect for you all to read the really, 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 really fine print, but just rest assured that essentially, it talks about what I just mentioned, the timeframe, the description of the initiative, the project manager, the community engagement plan, the tasks, the status of the deliverables, and whether it goes to a council committee or an advisory committee of council. Next slide, please. So, what I wanna do now is just transition into those efforts that are underway, and I am pleased to say that the majority of the things that were identified and requested of the Black Asheville Demands Coalition, our organization has work underway on just about all of them. So, I'm gonna quickly go through and just give you all an update. The first is a resolution to, can you go back to the first slide? Thank you. First is a resolution to remove or repurpose the monuments and a shroud until decision is reached by the task force. You can see that a number of the items have been checked. The resolution was passed on 6/9 and 6/19 by both the city and county, respectively. The monuments have been removed or shrouded, including the one on county property. City and county have received applications for membership on the task force, and the final decisions concerning the task force members will be due in the next 30 days or sooner. Next slide, please. Another one of our 30-day efforts is to work with the community on the renaming of streets. Again, these are all underway. Staff went to the African-American Heritage Commission last week, I think it was Thursday, and the commission's recommendation, their action, was to provide support on identifying names, but they did not want to be the lead entity in terms of the public engagement process. So, we'll be working over the next couple of weeks to identify how we work with the community, to identify which streets and which names to rename those streets. Next slide, please. Onto the 60-day, again, we have not had as much progress on this one. We have a new superintendent of schools. I've not had the opportunity to meet with him, but this one is to continue partnering with Asheville City Schools in Buncombe County, schools to address opportunity gaps. We'll be scheduling a meeting, and I hope to do that in the early August timeframe. Next slide, please. A community conversation around the budget to support transparency and needs, as well as an initiative that we're calling reimagining policing in our community. I think this is the one that has the most interest by the community. At our last council meeting, we talked about this in reference to, and asked to defund the police about 50%. We wanna make sure that we have a more deliberative conversation about all of the services that the City of Asheville delivers. So, right now, we're developing a community engagement process. We're meeting with a couple of key groups and individuals to test and further develop the proposed engagement process. Here's why we decided to take this approach. I am still, I'm calling myself still new to Asheville. Been here about a year and a half. If I were in Charlotte, I wouldn't know how to run a community engagement process, but I'm in a new community, and I wanna make sure that what we do resonates with the people of Asheville and that we will garner the results that we want to have, and I want this conversation to be meaningful. So, I'm trying to learn from a number of people. You know, we are testing the engagement process. We're getting input from groups and saying, "Do you think this is a right approach? Do you think this will help us achieve our goal?" And we had a meeting last week, and we have two meetings scheduled for tomorrow. We plan to launch the broader community engagement process in early August. And essentially, what we're doing is seeking input to determine how to provide services that will advance social and racial equity in this community. Next slide, please. Initiating conversations with the district attorney's office regarding the probation decision for Mr. Hickman. That has happened with staff from city attorney's office. They're still working with the DA's office and the restorative justice process related to the probation, issues and concerns that a group of folks in Asheville have raised. We plan to get back with that group to further discuss this initiative. We hope, again, to have more definitive information over the next couple of days. Go ahead, next slide. And so, within our 90 days, this one is a, this is a long one, and we actually had to reach out to the group to get further explanation, which was to provide protocol practices overview. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it related to Equity and Inclusion Department. We have gotten some clarification on what the request means, and essentially, it is assessing how effective is the Office of Equity and Inclusion as it relates to impacting and influencing decision-making related to city policies, budgets, hiring practices, contracting, et cetera. Now, one of the challenges that I have with this emphasis on a Equity and Inclusion Department is that this department is extremely valuable to our organization, but I want Equity and Inclusion within the City of Asheville, local government, to be a value, and not something that we check off a box or we forward to another department. So, we've got a lot of work to do. We are depending on the expertise of Equity and Inclusion Department to not just be the Department of Equity and Inclusion, but to help us assimilate those values into the entire organization. And I hope that this will not be something that is just a local, a local government value, but it would be a value of the entire City of Asheville. Next slide, please. Better understand and work through solutions for some things that we didn't even know, a harm-free zone. We're doing research and to gather an understanding and whether this is actually legal in our community to do. The city attorney's office is working on that, as well as the All Civilian Oversight Committee, which directly relates to police activity and oversight. Next slide, please. And then, we're kinda coming down to the end. We're gonna, the eighth one is to utilize best practices to recruit people of color. Work is already underway. We're reviewing job descriptions and training requirements, and this was an effort, and a few of these things were initiatives and efforts that we already had underway, so we are making good progress, and we will obviously bring back information to the community as well as to council. The last one is develop a race and gender-conscious policy in response to the disparity study. This work was already underway, so we are in the process of completing a proposed draft policy, and we hope to bring this to a committee for review of both council and one of council's advisory committees, and then to full council in September. Next slide. And so, moving forward, I think you all saw this slide and as part of our presentation at the last council meeting, and we will continue, every council meeting, to provide you with progress on these demands and to assure you that we've heard the community. We wanna respond and move forward together. We understand that racism is a systemic problem, as a lot of stuff in the ground. This is bigger than police, and the city cannot solve it alone, nor can we solve it within 90 days. Our solutions need to be strategic and collaborative, working with the community. We will engage those entities and a broader audience, anyone who wants to work with us, we are willing to work with them to address social and economic disparities in our community. Next slide, please. And so, with that, that is my manager's report, and I will be happy to take any questions if you all have any. I just wanna make sure that I just reiterate before I get to questions, that the broader community engagement process, I'm hoping to launch sometime in, in, in early August, not me, but us. We will be launching that in August. We're still gathering information about the approach, 'cause again, this is such an important conversation. We wanna get it right. We want to have input more about what we should do versus criticism about a process. So, with that, I will take questions.
Anyone have any questions? Yeah, Julie.
I've got two questions. Thanks very much for that. The first is, we got an email maybe earlier this week or last week, related to Pritchard Park and who Mr. Pritchard was. So, my question is, do we, is it, do we need to add, looking at our parks and potentially renaming parks as part of our streets, either as part of, or concurrent with, or after, but putting parks on the list to be renamed as well?
Absolutely. And I received that email, and I have Kathy Ball and Rajak Simmons working on what that process looks like now in terms of changing parks' names, and we will, we will definitely be addressing that.
Great. It just, it could be if, if the African-American Heritage Commission is coming up with, is identifying people that we want to honor, some people it might make more sense to name a park after as opposed to a road, so.
Got it.
That's just a thought. And then, the second question is, can you talk a little bit about, so the, the community engagement process that you're, that we're going into now, that, does that, is that sort of a two-pronged process? Is that, it's, is it looking at both policing as well as the budget? Can, and can you talk about, I mean, can you talk about how those two things are working together and how we're on track to get to a new budget in three months that will help address some of these, some, again, not all, but some of these issues?
So, thank you for that question, Ms. Mayfield. Yes, the budget process and the discussion around services, again, not just in terms of policing, but for the broader City of Asheville and local government, are intrinsically linked. We are hoping that the discussion that we have will not just be a one-and-done, and we're gonna get all the answers in three months. We're trying to get to a one-year budget and continue our conversations longer term in terms of how the, the budget for a number of our departments evolve over the next several years. So, this is a conversation that will be ongoing, and it may, it will likely happen every year for a while until we sort out what are the key services that police should undertake, and what are the key services that other departments of city government and our partners outside of city government would be, it would be more appropriate for them to undertake. Here's, here's our challenge. We don't have a budget adopted. You all have not adopted a budget. We are operating under an interim budget. What we hope to do at the meeting later this month, I think it's the 28th, is to adopt a three-month budget so that we can have this conversation for what would the police budget look like for a year, just one year, as well as the rest of, of city government, and then continue that conversation for, 'cause we'll be starting actually another whole budget process by the time we get this first budget adopted. How do we move into the, the second year of budgeting?
Okay. So, just, just to sort of set the public's expectations, we're, the, the budget that we have a hearing on and adopt in two weeks is not going to have any major shifts, right? Because it's basically a procedural step that we have to go through to allow us to start the conversation that we wanna have, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so, then, the hope is that after three months of, of some robust conversation, at that point, we would be, we would be adopting a, a new budget, a different budget, that would, that would hopefully get at some shifts in the budget.
For this year, that's what.
For this year, exactly. Okay. And then, we, there needs to be a whole nother conversation about what the process looks like going forward every year after that, and, and sort of get, trying to get this long-term in a place of shifting things around, and, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Deborah? Julie, I think that was helpful to try to make sure we understand how this is gonna work. So, we are technically going to have a public hearing and a vote on a budget item at our next meeting, but it will be just this short continuation budget. That's not a net, not a net change so that we can take a deeper dive and look at what kinds of changes we can make to the budget going forward. Any other, any other questions of the city manager before we move on? No? Okay.
I, I, I.
Brian?
Yeah. So, the three-month budget that we're going to be voting on, you say, will not have any cuts to the APD in that three-month budget, but will it have the increases that were proposed earlier? Will they be in that three-month budget?
Mr. Haynes, the budget will only be for three months, and essentially, in terms of increases, no. We would start with, with the And essentially in terms of increases, no, we would start with, with the baseline budget and any increases will, will be held off until your action in September.
Thank you.
I feel like we should just also acknowledge that, that we, Deborah sort of blew over it in her presentation, but the removal and/or shrouding of the Confederate monuments, which was a delightful thing to see. So thank you for the quick work on that.
You're quite welcome. And shout out to Richard White, who coordinated that effort internally for us, the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna turn to the public hearing items. The, we have three public hearings, but two of them we need a motion to, to continue. The first one, I need a motion to continue to July 28th. It's a public hearing to solicit comments for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act funds annual action plan for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Do I have a motion to continue this item to July 28th?
Mayor, this is Vijay. Happy to make that motion. Did, did we finally vote on the consent agenda?
Yeah. Yeah, we did that before the manager's report.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize. Sorry.
You voted for it.
Okay. Good. Sorry. I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Keith won that one. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item A to July 28th. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Whistler.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, that item will be moved to July 28th. The next is the public hearing to consider the rezoning of property located at 99999 Cortland Avenue and 99999 Woodside Place and 99999 Gudger Street from Urban Village to RS8 Residential Single Family High Density District. If you would like to comment live on this item, please call in and listen to the meeting by phone and remember to turn down your television or computer if you're also watching the meeting. There is a lag between the television and, and the phone of about four seconds and there is a lag between the live stream and your phone of about 10 seconds. When you listen by phone, you get the, a real-time experience in the meeting. After the welcome message, you'll be prompted to press star for more options. Next, you have three options. If you'd like to join the speaker queue for this item, this is public hearing item B, please press three. If you'd like to comment on another public hearing item, please wait until the item is being discussed. Again, by listening by phone, there will be a delay. Shannon Tuck is the city staffer who is going to present this item and Shannon, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Uh-oh, we can't hear you very well. Are you doing a headset thing?
I am.
For whatever reason, we can't hear staff very well at all when they use the headset.
Is this any better if I hold it?
That's better if you hold it like that. You can ask one option.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. The petition that's before you this evening is what we commonly refer to as a straight rezoning. Council frequently hears applications for conditional zonings that include a change in zoning designation along with a development proposal, but we also receive these straight rezoning applications which do not include development proposals. So just wanted to make that clarification before I get started. So next slide. Next slide, please. So the maps that you have before you are, oh, if we could go back, please. The maps that are before you are the Exhibit A and A1 maps that were included in your packet and are, illustrate the existing zoning on the left and the proposed zoning on a right, on the right. So the subject properties are currently zoned Urban Village. The two small properties are zoned in their entirety Urban Village and the larger parcel is split zoned, the majority of which is zoned Urban Village, and there's a little piece that's currently zoned RS8. The properties collectively are .4 acres and have frontage on Gudger Street and Woodside Place. Gudger Street is the right-of-way, that's to the east or along the right-hand side of the properties. And as you move around to the southern end of the property, it splits off into Woodside Place. So they have good access from these two different rights of way. The properties were actually zoned RS8 in the past and that is the proposal that is before you this evening, which is to rezone these parcels from Urban Village to RS8. And before 2007, the properties were zoned RS8. They were rezoned in 2007 to Urban Village as part of a large rezoning that included over 50 lots and that totaled almost 10 acres. The proposal at that time was for a large mixed-use development plan known as Montford Commons, but this was 2007. It was right before the recession and the proposal never went beyond that initial rezoning and master plan approval process. So those developers are now long gone and the master plan has long since expired. Because Urban Village requires, that zoning designation requires a development that is consistent with a master plan and, as I mentioned, there is no master plan any longer. And this combined with the fact that Urban Village developments also require a minimum of five acres means that these parcels, along with many of the other parcels, would require rezoning at some point before any new development could occur. Should this proposal be successful, the map on the right helps illustrate where the demarcation line between the Urban Village zoning and the RS8 would occur. So it would move from the eastern boundary to the western boundary and those three parcels would be absorbed into the RS8 zoning district. Next slide, please. This next slide is a clip from the Exhibit B map that was included in your packets. It's an aerial image that shows that the subject properties are currently undeveloped. They are adjacent to more undeveloped property to the west that is also zoned Urban Village. To the northwest, north and sort of eastern boundaries of the property, you can see that those properties are developed with single-family homes. And to the right, kind of tucked in the corner there, you see the edge of the Montford North Star Academy, which is Asheville's newest middle school. It's not uncommon to find schools in residential areas. The two uses support each other and are generally regarded as being compatible. As I mentioned, this is a straight rezoning, so there is no development plan pending for the property. However, the property owner did before, did appear before the Historic Resources Commission back in January of this year for preliminary plat approval that would recombine these three parcels into three new parcels with different boundaries that would all have a little piece that is located in the historic district. Next slide, please. All rezoning petitions, we always look at their consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan encourages infill residential development, particularly in areas that are in close proximity to employment, goods and services. As these three properties are located in the Montford neighborhood, they all sort of check those boxes, being very close and having close access to all of those things. The, as illustrated on this map, the properties are also designated as traditional neighborhood in the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan. And the traditional neighborhood describes areas that are compact and walkable that provide a range of housing types at moderate density. And it also identifies the RS8 zoning district that's being requested as a suitable zoning designation found in the traditional neighborhood areas. So the good news here is that should this rezoning be supported, no change in the future land use map would be required. Next slide, please. We also look at compatibility and in this particular instance, the RS8 zoning, along with the Montford Historic District standards, would allow for new infill development, but it would limit that future development to residential single-family. And that with those guidelines in place, it would help guide that that development be consistent and compatible with the surrounding single-family neighborhood. So we have a high level of confidence that the future development would be compatible with the uses around it. So with that, staff supports the rezoning request and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I don't, Shannon, this is Gwen. I don't know whether this makes sense to ask this question, but I noted that there's urban zoning right beside, I mean, you know, that this is part of a larger urban zoning and it sounds to me like that's not going to make sense anymore at all. Would it, would it make sense to just go back and take off the urban zoning for everything in that neighborhood and reinstate the RS8 so that it would kind of clear this up in the future?
We've discussed that some at a staff level and there are some very large parcels included in those 51 lots. So there, there is the potential for somebody maybe to come along at some point in time and do an urban village if, if that was desirable. Also, along some of the edges, RS8 may not be the most appropriate zoning designation and it may be more appropriate to consider something different. And with the city's plans to look at changes to our unified development ordinance and what those zoning districts may end up being in the future, we, we thought maybe it would be best to wait. And, and certainly as individual property owners had interest in developing those properties, we could look at them on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Julie, please. Yeah.
Yeah, Shannon, are there any structures on this property now?
The, there are no structures on the lots. There is a property just to the north is the petitioner's personal residence is 23 Mon, or 23 Cortland. The proposed recombination does include that property, so it would actually make that parcel a little bit larger. It would, it would sort of encroach into the subject properties and then would re-divide the balance of those properties into three lots. So that would be the only structure that, that may kind of appear in the future at this time, or that's, that exists at this time.
Okay. It looks, I'm on Google Earth and it looks, I mean, on Google Maps and it looks like there are two or three houses, but from the aerial view, but from the street view, you can't see them and they didn't show up on your map, so I, maybe those are not there anymore?
I'm, I'm not sure without looking at that aerial, but sometimes they are, you might be looking at older imagery. I'm not sure.
It may also be, it's not, I guess it doesn't go all the way down to Woodside Place. That's what I'm looking at. Never mind.
Are there any other questions of Shannon before we open the public hearing on this item? No? Okay. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing on this item. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a note here that Tikun Gachak is representing the developer and he's here to speak on this, I suppose, if needed, right? I guess, Shannon, that would be a question for you if, oh, there, okay. Hello?
Yes, hi. Just very briefly, I wanted to provide a little more background to the council. I appreciate you letting me do this virtually and I appreciate you having this meeting. First, let me say that. Just so you can know, I, I've done a fair amount of legal work for the property owner who I don't believe ever intended to participate in the rezoning of his own property to Urban Village. We think it was a mistake in some of the mapping and the transfer history of this property such that the developer believed that it owned this property when the original application for Urban Village zoning was made. So the way I'm looking at this is sort of a correcting a inadvertent zoning of this property as Urban Village, you know, 13 years ago because it was never part of the underlying developer's plans, this particular property, because that developer didn't own it at the time. So the majority of the property is just returning back to what it should have, should have been and remained way back when. So that's, that's the context I wanted to provide the council and I'm happy to answer any questions too that, that I may be able to field. Yeah, I appreciate the time.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Gachak? No? Okay. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. So do we have any caller staff who wish to comment on public hearing item B?
Mayor, we currently have five callers in the queue.
Okay, thank you.
Caleb, your mind?
Hi there, my name is Erica Mayer. I am an Asheville resident and a small business owner. My comment was actually for Councilwoman Campbell's presentation. There wasn't really an opportunity to comment on that, so I'm calling for that. And I wanted to say I'm glad to see that the city is listening to the community's demands. I really hope that it's been a fast.
Sorry, we're doing, we're doing an item regarding a rezoning and, but we will have public comment at the end of the meeting and that would be the opportunity to speak, speak on the topic you're wishing to speak on. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll call back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dawa, maybe you all can check and see if anybody in the queue wants to speak on public hearing item B?
Mayor, we are having people drop off. We've got two people in the queue now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure why there wasn't any opportunity for us to speak to the first council meeting agenda point. Can we talk that out?
We, so whenever we do presentations and reports on our agenda, there is no public comment under that portion of the agenda, but there is certainly public comment at the end of the agenda and you are welcome to queue up for that when we get there, which should be shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Scott. I live just outside Asheville. Looking at the map, I believe that that area was once called Stump Town and was an African-American community. I know that there is some discussion about reparations that will be coming up later in this evening. And one of them, one of the points that is going to be raised is about land that was taken out of African-American ownership, homeownership for urban renewal. And that is one of those very areas. So I wonder if it's appropriate to be talking about other uses for that tract of land when it may be subject to a, a later item on the agenda in a very different context. I guess I'll just take my answer offline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Manheimer.
Hi, Mayor Manheimer, I just want to address you specifically, because the last few times you've cut people off during the public comment at one hour, even though you don't have to do that. People are gonna call in, and you're gonna have to listen to us one way or another. Thanks, hi.
Thank you. Staff, do we have any?
Mayor, that was the last call in the queue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, council, as is the protocol for these virtual meetings, we don't actually get to vote on this item yet, but we get to have a motion and a second to recess the public hearing of item B to July 28th, and at that time, we will vote on this item, but we will not take further public comment. So do I have a motion to recess the public hearing regarding this rezoning to July 28th?
Gwen, so moved.
Okay.
This is Vijay, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor Whistler.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself as mayor, aye. Okay, we'll vote on this at the next meeting. For public hearing, item C, do I have a motion to continue this item to July 28th?
This is Gwen, so moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to move public hearing, item C, to July 28th. I'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Whistler. Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself as mayor, aye. Okay, we will hear that item on July 28th. We have one item of unfinished business. This is the public hearing that we heard at the last meeting. It is regarding a vote to amend the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan to Allocate Funds to Help Prevent, Prepare For, and Respond to COVID-19. Can I get a motion and a second for the public hearing to amend the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan to Allocate Funds to Help Prevent, Prepare For, and Respond to COVID-19?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, we have a second, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council, when I state your name, please say aye or nay to amend the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. We did take a public comment on this item at our last meeting, if you will recall.
Mayor, I'm sorry, before you go into roll call, can you tell me who made that second?
Julie did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Whistler.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, council. Under new business, we have two items. The first is a resolution delegating authority to the city attorney to enter into a contract with Hillard Heinz, I believe is how you say that, to evaluate and provide a report on the Asheville Police Department response to recent protests. If you would like to comment live on this item, please call in and listen to the meeting by phone. I'm gonna just repeat these instructions again. And remember to turn down your television or computer if you're also watching the meeting. The television will be about four seconds behind the live meeting, and the stream will be close to 10 seconds behind the live meeting. And listening by phone will be in real time. After the welcome message, you'll be prompted to press star for more options. Next, you have three options. If you would like to join the speaker queue for this item, please press three. If you would like to comment on another item, please wait until the item is being discussed. Again, listening by phone means you hear the meeting with, without a four to 10-second delay. This, again, this is the item under new business, the first item, and it is a resolution delegating authority to the city attorney to enter into a contract with Hillard Heinz. And so we are going to hear from the city attorney first, Brad Branham.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, members of council. As all of you know, on June 15th, this council unanimously signed a letter directed to me with the direction to locate a, an independent evaluation firm to perform an analysis specifically on the Asheville Police Department's response to the recent protests here within the city. Since that time, my office has undertaken the job of conducting a search for that firm, and tonight, I am prepared to make a recommendation, as the mayor said, of the firm of Hillard Heinz to perform that task. I'd like to start by giving council some information regarding the background of who this firm is and what specifically they do. Hillard Heinz is a consultant and assessment firm specializing in security risk management around the world. They were founded in 2004, and they provide consulting and evaluation services for corporate entities, individuals, as well as governments, both state, local, and federal. One of the areas of service expertise that's provided by them is the assessment specifically of law enforcement agencies, police departments usually. They specifically focus on improving the efficiency and effectiveness of the police force, strengthening management operations and the oversight, advancing community-focused policing, enhancing the internal affairs function, and building new platforms of integrity and trust amongst the community. Through this work, they have conducted evaluations of numerous police agencies, not only around the country, but the world. The team that would specifically perform the work here in Asheville would conduct our evaluation as a four-person team. That unit includes a mix of law enforcement professionals and attorneys. They have experience, extensive experience, in fact, as department chiefs, criminal justice and civil rights, legal practitioners, as well as being professors of criminal and constitutional law. They have experience in performing assessments, such as the one requested here in Asheville, and advising police departments in numerous cities throughout the country, including Washington DC, New Orleans, Louisiana, Chicago, as well as for departments in Central and South America. They provide consulting services for the United States government as well, including the Department of Homeland Security, the US Customs and Border Protection, and the United States State Department. They have also facilitated numerous community dialogues regarding policing throughout the country. We felt this was an extremely important aspect and area of expertise that any firm needed to bring to this process. They also have significant experience in civil rights mediation, and one of the team members is, in fact, not only an attorney, but a civil rights mediator. They've also recently provided consulting services here in North Carolina, specifically around the toppling of the Silent Sam statue in Chapel Hill. It's also important to note that this firm has the requisite independence. They have no prior relationship to the city of Asheville, to the Asheville Police Department, or any member of the command structure of APD. After having reviewed thoroughly their credentials, researched their past and recent work, as well as personally interviewing their assessment team, I feel very strongly tonight that Hillard Heinz possesses the necessary competence, experience, expertise, and, as I said, independence to conduct a thorough, fair, and unbiased evaluation of the Asheville Police Department response to the recent protest, and thereafter, to provide a meaningful and transparent report, which would be presented publicly to this city council. Now, in terms of the evaluation itself, I want to give you a little bit of a sense of what that would look like. The assessment will review the APD response to the protests for the period of May 30th through June 6th. Now, we certainly know that the protests occurred after that date, and demonstrations continue through this very day. However, based upon the information we have discovered thus far during our contemporaneous phase of evaluation that we're conducting internally, we believe that this is the period where the vast majority of the police interaction with protesters and members of the public occurred. This assessment would include the crowd control efforts, such as the utilization specifically of tear gas and other projectiles, as well as the destruction of supplies at the protester medic area. Now, as part of this process and the final report, Hillard Heinz would provide the council with an assessment on our policies and practices, in addition to review of what occurred during the protest. This will serve as professional competent advice on, among other things, our use of tear gas, as well as other crowd control measures. This information can then be used by APD and the city as a basis to inform our own policies, as well as any potential changes we would like to make, and potential disciplinary actions that might be necessary within the department. The analysis would be done in three phases. The first phase, we anticipate to take only one to two weeks, and during that time, the firm will review all relevant policies and procedures, reports, operational plans, as well as conduct initial meetings with my office, as well as other city personnel and representatives. During the second phase, which we expect to take three to six weeks, they will conduct onsite visits, or potentially some virtual visits, based upon where we stand with the current pandemic. But public engagement will be a vital part of this phase. The second phase will include viewing of body cam footage pending a court order allowing such, site visits to examine specifically the areas where some of these interactions took place, and individual interviews with members of APD, city staff, and, most importantly, members of the public. They will also be conducting at least one public community forum for members of the community in general to voice their concerns. During the final phase, which we suspect will take anywhere from seven to nine weeks, the firm will analyze all of the collected information, coordinating with my office to prepare a final report, which, as I said, will be presented publicly to this council. In total, we expect the process to take roughly three to four months, including a multi-day onsite visit and significant public engagement with up to four members of the Hillard Heinz team. Now, including preparation of a final report and a presentation to council, we do expect the final cost of this to be at a maximum around $83,000. It is a significant cost, but I believe, based upon the expertise of this firm and the experience of the evaluation team, as well as the time involved, and in looking at the market for similar firms performing this kind of work, that this is in line with the type of contract service that the city is requesting. Based upon this, I believe that Hillard Heinz is an excellent choice for city council to make to pursue the analysis of the police response, and I am making my official recommendation to the council of Hillard Heinz. Happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have.
Of Brian, yes.
So Brad, as part of this inquiry, will they be looking into whether or not the APD violated their own internal policies with the deployment of the less than lethal weapons that were deployed? And if not, can this be added to the scope of their inquiry?
Thank you for that question, Councilman Haynes. Yes, absolutely affirmative, they will be looking at whether or not the APD policies were followed specifically with regard to the use of chemical munitions, as well as rubber munitions. But in addition to that, and I think this is very important, they will also be determining whether or not the actions, as well as the policies, conform with modern-day best practices for community policing. So both of those, I think, are vital importance, and both of them will be included in the scope of services.
Are there any other questions of Brad before we entertain a motion?
I don't have a question for Brad, but would like to make a statement before we vote, whenever that's appropriate.
Any other questions for Brad? Okay, Brian, you can feel free to say what you're gonna say now before we get a motion, that's fine.
Okay. So during the June 23rd council meeting, I asked that a vote on banning the use of tear gas by APD be on today's agenda. It's not on today's agenda due to the lack of council support for voting on this issue at this time. Some council members expressed a desire to wait on the findings of the evaluation we are about to vote on before addressing the use of force methods deployed. But what can we expect to see in these findings? They may conclude that some of the actions taken by APD during the protest were inappropriate under the circumstances, but they will almost certainly conclude that no laws were broken. They will likely provide information showing these so-called non-lethal uses of force to be widely accepted methods of crowd control, leaving it up to us, council, and the community to decide whether or not it was, was or is the right thing to do. While I sincerely hope this evaluation spells out errors made and offers possible solutions through policy changes, it will not do our work for us. I'm asking tonight that the appropriate steps are taken to authorize council to view body cam footage from these protests. And since there can be no vote tonight on the banning of these weapons, I'm asking that the crowd control weapons deployed during these protests go to the Public Safety Committee to be addressed individually concerning their safety, along with looking at possible alternatives, and whether or not they should continue to be available to the Asheville Police Department.
Okay, any, anyone else have a comment or a question before we proceed to a motion? Brian, did you want, did you want to, it's true, yes, the council did not want to put the tear gas item on the agenda tonight. Rather, it ended up that we had Brad presenting to us this consultant to do this third-party review, and council would like to hear the results of that before proceeding. I mean, you, you know, you're obviously the chair of public safety, so you can take up these items in public safety and run concurrently with the work of the consultant, in my opinion. I mean, I think that would be possible. I don't think that would be a problem. I see some nodding, so maybe that's.
That's what I'm asking, that we go ahead and look at it at public safety.
Yeah. Council, then, with Brian's request being considered, it's not part of the vote tonight, I mean, that just requires some head nods, and you can form the agenda for that, to put those items on the agenda. Council, do I have a motion on this item, and I'm looking for the wording, to authorize the city attorney to enter into a contract with Hillard Heinz to evaluate and provide a report on the Asheville Police Department response to recent protests?
This is Shanika, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Staff, do we have anyone waiting to speak on this item, the first item of new business on the agenda?
We do, mayor. We currently have nine people in the speaker queue.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Can y'all hear me? Awesome. John Roberts, City of Asheville. So y'all can spend over 80 grand on some consultants, but you can't escape the picture of Cassidy Doyle that I hope every single member of this council looked at and saw the wounds that she suffered, the 40 stitches that were put into her face after she took a tear gas canister to the face from 15 yards away, shot at her by the Asheville Police Department. I hope you've seen that picture, I hope you understand the seriousness of this, and I hope that you will work to make that poor girl whole because of the terrible, terrible, catastrophic injuries that she suffered in the middle of trying to peacefully demonstrate for black lives. If y'all don't, that is on you. The fact that you don't want to talk about banning these weapons tonight is more cowardice on the fact of members of council who don't want to embrace the reality of what happened during these protests. You're sharking from your responsibilities. We see you, and we understand that what happened was not only an injustice, it was a violation of human and civil rights, and it's my hope that a class action lawsuit is levied against the city of Asheville, so the people that were injured during that protest get compensated and made whole. Oh, yeah, Esther, you should resign. and it's my hope that a class action lawsuit is levied against the city of Asheville so the people that were injured during that protest get compensated and made whole. Oh yeah, Esther, you should resign.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hi, yes. So in regards to what we're discussing tonight, I'll just second what the other caller said and to say that making a gesture to pour $80,000 worth of our tax money to try to quote-unquote investigate something that there's already public access to, that there's already video footage of, that there's already audio footage of, in abundance. I think all of us here in the city of Asheville are tired of the constant gaslighting. We're tired of the smoke and mirrors. We're tired of the performative, like, shot that you put on display every time your officers do something fuck-up. We're done. We're done. We're through.
Hi, I'm an Asheville resident here, and I was a party to some of the horrible violent things that happened at what started as very peaceful protestings, including Monday when we were stopped at West Gate Bridge and tear gassed for pretty much nothing. I really do think that the conversation needs to be had, the Geneva Convention violations in place, and violating medical neutrality by destroying our medical facility during a time of civil unrest is absolutely uncalled for. We pay taxes to keep our city up and going, not for the people who are put here to serve and protect to attack us.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to actually speak directly to the hiring of Hillard Hines. I'm confused about why we are not, as a city, using the Police Advisory Committee. I don't know if I'm saying their name right. And I'm looking at the website of Hillard Hines. I see a sea of white male faces. That is of great concern to me. I'd really like to hear from council, how are you anticipating bringing the city residents and the people affected by what's going on in the Black Lives Matter movement, which is what the protests are about? How you're bringing them into this investigation? Could someone speak to that? Thank you.
Hello, this is Michael Jamar. I see that you guys are planning on doing that assessment with Hillard Hines, but I needed to comment about the protests that happened on the Saturday after Juneteenth with Blue Lives Matter. If you're planning on assessing those days of protests and the police response during the Black Lives Matter protests, I think you should be able to assess the Blue Lives Matter protests that was happening. Seeing that, I think, the city council meeting three weeks ago stated that it was illegal for that many people to publicly carry ARs in a public space and the direct police response to that, I feel that it would be important to also assess that and to kind of compare and contrast the different responses to these kind of groups assembling. Yeah, I find that would be important. So that's what I got to say on that. So please continue to figure that out there.
Fine. I don't have anything proactive. I'm coming from an emotional place, and I feel that an assessment is not something that would be productive because after the Johnny Rush case, there were also professionals who came in. There was training that was supposedly happened with the APD. And I feel that it's really about common sense and about personal responsibility, and that what's really important and necessary is that the belief system of the Asheville Police Department is what's uncovered and that there is no cloaking by laws and lawyers and assessment firms, et cetera, and that people come together, that the APD comes together with the public, with all of us who are calling in and those of us who aren't calling in, and have mediation, and really get down to the brass tacks of how they're acting and why they're acting the way that they are and using excessive force. It's uncalled for, it's inhumane, it's inconsiderate, and it's as if, like, would they be shooting their own family and treating their own family the way in which they've been treating our general public? Thank you.
If folks could remember to tell us their name, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi there, this is Ashley Cooper. I live in Monford, and I appreciate that you're taking this seriously because as I listen night after night to explosives going off that I could hear from my house of the tear gas canisters, the alarming response deserves attention. And I also, though, I echo some of the former callers about the concern, how do you balance the need to do due diligence of process and to understand, you know, the exact of what happened, and also actively address the harms that have occurred? Because as was said, we have had reports in the past that say harms have occurred, and nothing gets done to actually change the process. I'm very curious about how this group was selected. I also reviewed the website. I counted 54 people on that website, and eight of which appeared to be people of color. That's a huge discrepancy, and that's going to impact the culture of that organization. I didn't write down fast enough some of the names that the attorney named of who have been past clients, but a lot of those, like the State Department, there was a lot of names mentioned that are institutions that we know have a history of discrimination and police violence. And so that's used as, like, they've worked with these large institutions, but we know there's discrimination in those institutions. It doesn't build my competence. I also would really like to request that this, only looking at incidents through June 6, if we're looking at the whole system of how the police are responding, we would be looking at the disparity of the response between when there was Black Lives Matter protesters versus when there was Blue Lives Matter protesters. So that should be broadened to include when the folks who were walking around carrying AR-15s were allowed to do so. That needs to be part of, how are we looking at how protests are being handled? And then I'm also curious about where the funds that are going to be used to pay for this contract are coming from. These funds should be pulled from the budget for APD. They are responsible for the necessity of this third-party assessment and the constant push that taxpayers have to pay for the result of police responsible actions, or the responsibility of the actions lies on them. And then I also want to echo what another person was said about, if this was your own children, like, seriously, if it was your own kids standing up for their rights to get to exist, and this is how they were treated, are we taking the same level of emphasis and importance that we would if it was our own kids? Thank you.
Hi there, this is Ben Spencer, South Asheville. I'm just calling for, just to echo the comments of the previous callers as well, I want to add that the entire premise of this study seems to be pretty problematic. I mean, Brad specifically noted that one of the things they would be doing is looking at the practices and the policies to see if they are in line with modern policing standards. I don't know where you've been for the past several years, but modern policing standards are, in fact, part of the problem. There's no need for this study to see whether or not their actions lived up to something that was written down. This is a chance for Asheville to take the lead, and if we really want to make a difference, you have that power. You can demand that the city manager takes these actions. She's directly responsible for the police department. If the police department itself refuses to follow those directives, she can remove the chief and do anything necessary to ensure that these actions take place. You could begin by slashing the budget of the police department. 50% seems like a good starting point. Additionally, you could demand that there was no arrest and harassment of people for things like sex work and any drug use whatsoever, as well as really re-envisioning the way that you consider the laws and regulations, and really trying to ensure that those are actually things that we care about more than the harassment and continued subjugation of folks of color living in the city. I think it's pretty disingenuous to go through with spending this much money on a study while we've also got a massive looming housing crisis as people are going to begin being evicted and unemployment funds are running out. It just seems like a very backwards-thinking way of approaching this problem. You need to defund the police department and move forward in creating a system which is more just. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, please share your name.
Hi, sorry, the robot was talking. My name is Thomas Bellmore. I live in East Asheville. I, you know, was surprised to not see the motion that Ben Haines, Councilman Haines, left on, you know, that had been made about committing, you know, tear gas use on Asheville citizens at the end of last meeting. That was a surprise, so I'm glad to hear that it's been brought up. Seeing that this, you know, mostly you're talking about on the table, this study seems more like a delay tactic, you know, similar to, you know, tabling the action that Councilman Haines was asking for last week. It's clear that the city of Asheville is asking for not a reform of the police, but a defunding of the police, a slashing of the budget by 50%. We're not looking to see if the city of, the Asheville Police Department behaved legally. Like the councilman said, they will find that they were within their rights. The mayor of Asheville imposed a curfew that allowed cover for them, an excuse, to use lethal force against peaceful citizens. I hear a lot tied, the use of tear gas tied to protecting the bridge. Later that week, tear gas continued to be used. I was part of a group of people who were walking away from City Hall with our hands up, protesting police brutality, and were met in response with violent action from police for no other reason than peacefully demonstrating. I hope that the mayor resigns, that we can, that y'all listen to calls for direct and clear actions. I don't think that the facts are under dispute in this thing, and any delay is just seeking to not make action. Thank you very much. Please resign.
Hi, my name is Nettie Fisher. I'm an Asheville resident and native. I first want to just take a moment to thank city manager Campbell and the other members of city council that are obviously trying to listen, regardless of all of the bureaucratic red tape that we have to deal with. Rather than repeating some of the points that have just been mentioned, I want to underscore that I think one of the things that the community is really struggling with right now is what Brian Haines mentioned, that this report will probably say that what happened was technically legal, but our laws are not enough. Our laws are not reflecting what we, as a community, feel is ethical, and that is the real problem. So whatever happens with this report, I do want to say it does give me pause that the four members and their credentials of this team are likely going to be pro-police. They are people that have experience in law enforcement and civil rights, yes, but they're people that are steeped in law enforcement culture, and they're going to be looking at these issues of legality in terms of what the book says, what the laws are right now. So regardless of whether you get this report, we want to know what's going to come out of that. It's not a black and white issue of this is legal or this is not. It's an issue of, is this ethical? Does this represent what our community thinks is right? I think another thing our community is really struggling with right now is the timeline of bureaucracy. And so, again, we understand that you asked to wait for this report to make a resolution on tear gas. We're asking that, we're telling you, we don't have time to wait. We need you to make these decisions now. We need you to just do the right thing. And it seems pretty clear, listening to our community, that there are resounding voices saying the same thing. And if the use of tear gas is one of those things we're saying, and even the ACLU is bringing up that this is wrong, we don't need to wait for the report. We don't need to wait for the report. We don't need to wait for the commission, the reparations commission, to decide where the money should come from for reparations. We need to just divest from the police now and use that money appropriately. I also really do want to bring up as well, the $80,000, that should not be taxpayer money, that should be police money. If they're making these actions, decisions, and we need to challenge them, then it shouldn't hurt the taxpayer dollars. It shouldn't hurt funds that could go to equity inclusion. It needs to come from divesting from the police. Again, I really, I'm not calling for any of you to resign, and I really am honestly very inspired by what I've seen happen within our community. And I just want each and every one of you to know that we support you and we want to see change with you. We know that this is the process, that we can't just dismantle the system entirely and start over. We have to work within what we have, but we also can't wait. We can't afford to just go by the book and go by the system. We have to change the system, and we need you to help us with that because you're the ones with power. So please, listen to your own ethical and moral compass and not just rely on these reports.
Hi, I'm Kaylin Breeden, and the use of force by APD during the protest was a disappointment to our community. I would like to make a comment on the reparations initiative. I agree with the things that are put forth in this initiative, but ultimately, what the reparations that our community is asking for is not on the agenda, and that is defunding the Asheville Police Department by 50%, reallocating resources towards programs for our communities that make us safer. Centering our policing as a community effort takes law enforcement out of situations they were not trained for, especially when focusing on mental health and substance abuse. Police brutality is all too common when we're looking at our black and brown communities. We need to be investing in affordable housing, education, business opportunities for these communities, and defunding the police would give us those funds. Let's reallocate these funds to the communities that need it the most instead of gassing protesters and destroying their tents. This is so maddening to me. This is not the community that we are. I'm open to speaking more about this with y'all. I believe this is our chance to transform how we operate in this world, how we police our communities. There is no need for this amount of money to go towards our police, and we need to spend our money aligned with our values. And you guys know what those are. So I appreciate y'all's time, but I think we need to push this budget forward, and we need to defund the police. Thank you, guys.
Staff, do we have any other callers on this new business item one regarding the contract with Hillard Hines?
Mayor, in the speaker queue, it doesn't let us know what item...
Okay.
We don't have the opportunity to speak to them before we bring them into the meeting.
Okay, so folks in the speaker queue, we're on new business item one. This is the contract regarding Hillard Hines to evaluate and provide a report on the Asheville Police Department response to recent protests. If you do want to speak to the issue of the reparations resolution or just a general public comment, we will have... or just a general public comment, we will have those opportunities later on in the meeting. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Next speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Okay. Hi, my name is James Semple. I'm calling about the Hillard Hines document. I've spent the last few days reading some of the reports Hillard Hines has prepared for other cities and townships. And the things that Brad lists, things we're going to point them at, seem useless. They will respond to exactly what we ask and they will address exactly what we ask of them. Because they are an enterprise security risk management firm first. So if we don't ask the right questions, we're not going to get the right answers. We need to be very precise in what we ask. We're not asking about legality, we're asking about best practices. Best practices say that it is okay to shoot a man if he has a taser. It's really not what we're looking for here. I'm a bad, bad metric. It's eighty grand for nothing. When we get the report, we'll know nothing that we don't already know. This appears to be you guys slow-playing things, hoping we'll forget about it. We won't, realistically. We should be voting right now on Brian's resolution to get rid of tear gas. That would be a step in the right direction. That would not be theater, that would be response. That's good. And I would note, the APD announced today they're hiring a new officer. So we can add that up to one more lie that's been spewed in this whole mess. Beyond that, I would say your decorum rules, it's pearl clutching, you need to get over it. The world is outraged. The world is right to be outraged. Have a nice day.
Hi, Mayor, my name is Rosemary Farley and I'm a student at UNCA. I just want to go ahead and second everything that everyone had previously said. But I also want to make the point in support of Councilman Haines' initiative to vote on getting rid of tear gas. Even if this report finds that what was done was illegal, which we know should not, is a pretty, pretty low bar for what is humane and what is fair, it doesn't grant, who, who would bring charges to the Asheville Police Department? It would be the Asheville Police Department. So this idea that by examining the legality of what they did in some way we're going to see some, you know, great action taken or some reckoning that wasn't previously there is ridiculous. We shouldn't be reasoning with these people. We know what we need to do, which is to take away their rights, take away their privileges, take away their funding. So as a legislative branch, that's what you have the ability to do. And as a lot of people have already said, we already have all of the video and evidence and witnesses of the horrible atrocities that took place during these protests. So yeah, we really don't need this report. It's so much money, my God. And I really hope you're shaking it out of the police budget because we should not be paying for something to cover the asses of the police department that is hurting us. Yeah, thank you, Councilman Haines. And I don't know how to turn myself off now, but next caller.
Hi, my name is Violet. I live in West Asheville. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly that what you guys are proposing here is really just another committee, which is, seems to be kind of what you do, is propose committees instead of doing anything. Not only is it just some committee, as multiple people pointed out, it's mostly staffed by white men and made up of people who were ex-cops. Some of them worked for the Customs and Border Patrol. Basically the worst type of people to be investigating with. We don't need a further investigation. I don't know why you continue to stall. Like, this is what you do every single time. We ask you to do anything, if you stall and you come up with another committee and you put it off and you say, oh, we're not interested in hearing how the process works. Well, listen to us. We are telling you what we want. We want the government, we want the police budget cut in half by fifty percent immediately. That's, that's not, that's not after another investigation, another committee by ex-cops immediately. Are you listening? Immediately!
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please, please share your name.
Hi, thanks. My name is Carmelo Pamplonio. And I'm not here to berate everyone, but I would just like to lay some things out in response to this. So the taxpayers were shot with their own tax money and now they're essentially asked to pay more tax money to determine if this was excessive. And I would like to echo Councilmember Haines' sentiment on all of this. So how much taxpayer money are you willing to throw at Hillard Hines Corporation just so that they can come to the already well-known conclusions that one, the police were already eager to engage in excessive force? And two, that your city is completely outraged at the response of the Asheville Police Department? If there's to be any investigations, we need a legitimate public commission, not a private for-profit company to lead this. And this would be all to outline suggestions for the APD? The council can push for a court order to obtain police body cam footage. The rest can be handled from there. I mean, on May thirty-first, the APD, they were armed in riot gear. They aimed their weapons at citizens of Asheville and peaceful protesters. They shot toxic CS gas on the Jeff Owens Bridge. There were children and families in that crowd, cars on the highway, they were gassed. There was no warning or instruction on what to do beforehand. On June second, the APD put the city of Asheville in the international news when they egregiously destroyed an approved medical tent, shouting at people, pushing medics to the ground, aiming their weapons at civilians. They destroyed over seven hundred dollars in medical supplies during a pandemic. Just the other Saturday, as one of the other callers pointed out, proud members of the quote-unquote patriotic brigade Knights of the KKK came out to a counter protest armed with ARs aggressively harassing and occasionally aiming them at pedestrians. So according to NC statute fourteen dash two seven seven point two, it is illegal to have a weapon at or near a protest in North Carolina, but the police chose to mingle with these men instead and act retroactively. So this is all holistically the same situation as the nineteen nineteen racial protests in Chicago, the same as the Harlem protests in nineteen thirty-five, the same as the Watts riots. We keep repeating and we keep sitting in, inaction. We need to divest from the police department by fifty percent and invest democratically in new public provisions. What is the point of having a state if it's not going to take care of its own people, its own constituents? Let alone listen to them. This is no time to wait. We need to mount a solution on the scale of this problem. And I think a good solution would be starting by listening to Councilman Brian Haines' suggestion to ban the use of toxic CS gas and work on the divestment plan for the police. Thank you.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Hi, my name is Sydney and I live in South Asheville. So I am, first of all, really kind of shocked that the City of Asheville is willing to spend this much money on an investigation, whereas like many other callers have mentioned, it seems like we already have plenty of evidence that what the Asheville Police Department did was breaking the law. And even if it wasn't considered breaking the law, it was still very immoral. I think that Chief David Zach should resign. I think that the way that he handled the breaking of the Geneva Convention was very inappropriate. I think that the police department, like other callers have mentioned, the budget should be cut in half. And what I really want to know is if Hillard Hines does come back saying the Asheville Police Department did break the law, what are we really going to do to the Asheville Police Department? Will these officers really be given the right kind of punishment? Or will they receive some sort of qualified immunity? Will that current police officers that have histories of civil rights violations, will their employment be reviewed? Will they be asked to resign or will they be fired? I think, like everyone else has mentioned, this is just a big way to push back what the city and what the people of Asheville really want to vote on. And that's the use of tear gas, that is defunding the police. It's just a way to extend that. And I think it's very inappropriate. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please share your name.
My name is Davidson Jones. I live in North Asheville. First of all, I want to salute all of you. While I'm looking at my screen, you look like a cohesive group. I do not envy you for what you were being confronted with. Asheville just went through a harsh learning for the whole world to see. I wouldn't challenge the motive of operational managing change in Asheville. I've seen the playbook, get a crisis and call an outside consulting firm. They give you a white paper and the white paper gets lost. I saw the evaluation for how minorities get the contracts. We spent three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That died. I can tell you that died. I watched it close up. It didn't happen. In Asheville, we have the ability to manage change. The expertise is here. It's on the board, it's in the city council, it's in the county, it's all over Asheville. We know how to manage change. We know what the problems are. It's a matter of will to do something about it. Another pattern I've seen here in twenty-six years as a minority, black-colored man, we hard black people to do work and don't free them up to do their job. You got a city manager, you got a fairly new chief, that's who we got. We have to start from a position of trust, let them do the job. We have a mechanism of getting rid of people that don't do the job. I say, let them do the job, let the city manager do the job. Brad, I'll ask you directly. Do you know anything about the value system of that consulting firm as it relates to equity and inclusion? That question to you, Brad. Can you hear me, Brad?
Mayor, I'm happy to respond.
So this is the part where we do public comment on the item. So if there are questions, that is fine to pose questions, but we'll wait till the end to have them, to have them addressed. So.
Okay. So I'll make a statement.
Yes, please.
I, I'll make a statement. I watched the monument get covered, it's shrouded, as we're talking about how to get more minority people in the contracts. So I'm saying, when you go out for a contract, at least look at the companies that you're hiring and see that your value system matches what you want in the future. That's all. Thank you.
Hey.
Hello, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Hey, yeah, I don't feel a need to self-identify myself if I'm not an elected member of public office, unlike the rest of y'all. You look really uncomfortable, Esther Manheimer, or however you say your stupid-ass name. Why don't you just quit your job?
Hello, my name is Scott and I'm from West Asheville. My first point that I want to make is I don't see how this firm can be considered independent and unbiased while also having law enforcement professionals serving on the team. I'll remind council and the city attorney that most, in fact, almost all of Asheville residents are not law enforcement professionals. And I see no reason why law enforcement professionals should have an outsized representation on this team. Cops are more likely to trust cops and your residents are largely not cops and your citizens largely do not trust cops if this meeting is any indication. The second point I'd like to make is that if this motion passes, I, I'd like to demand that that money come directly from APD's budget. Anything less is an insult to your residents and especially the black community in Asheville. The third point I want to make is that I do not care if APD's policy was broken in these protests. Bad organizations have bad rules. And I've heard the council pay a lot of lip service to the idea of systemic racism. And if the council is serious about systemic racism, they'll think about the system that the APD operates in. Tear gas is a weapon that is banned by the Geneva Conventions and yet it is used widespread across the US. So I'd like to ask y'all to stop being cowards and take even just a small measure to improve the health and safety of your residents. Stop coddling police at the expense of the vast majority of your residents asking for justice. And then finally, I just want to close by saying, we need to have defunded APD yesterday. We should ban tear gas today. City council needs to stop taking half-measures and act like someone besides Councilman Haines gives a single care for the resident's safety. Mayor Manheimer, you need to have resigned yesterday. Black Lives Matter, thank you. That's it.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Hi, my name is Alex and I'm a resident of Asheville, North Carolina. I'm calling because I'm really, I'm more than disappointed. I'm outraged, I'm furious. You guys are, you guys are doing the least amount possible. This is a time where you need to realize we're, we're in something bigger than a moment. We're in, we're in the middle of a pandemic. This unrest, this uncertainty, mental illness, all these things are going to, we're going to, it's going to rise to the top. We got a chance here to rise to this moment and deliver something to these people. And when I say these people, I mean this whole community. But I want to mention something that needs priority that's not really getting mentioned. And I didn't hear it mentioned regarding this study. And that's black people. Why are they not a focus of this study? Why is this study just focused on the protest? I'll tell you why. I know the answer. It's a diversion technique. It's a slowdown technique. It's, it's wrong, it's messed up. We do not need that. And I'm so glad so many people are calling in and saying that and realize it fully. It's BS. Best-case scenario, when you get the results of that back, it's going to be inactionable. It's going to be something we can't even work with. I think that's the purpose of this, because it really does nothing. Defund the police now, immediately. Fifty percent at least. And take that money and divert it to actual professionals. People that are actually trained to handle mental health crises. And I'm not talking about people that show up just to arrest somebody, book them, put them in jail, then they get bailed out in many cases. I'm talking about actual changes. People that arrive to the scene, maybe if it's, if it's a non-violent occasion, without even a gun, or without a gun on your hip. Because it's not a violent situation. Less than one percent of the calls in Asheville, I learned today, I believe it's correct, is that less than one percent are for violent crimes. So we don't need to be sending people out there with this killology mindset. And that's a real thing. Dave Grossman, look it up if you need to. He's going around teaching people about killology, be ready to kill. Hell, no. We need to stop with this shit. We need to start the fuck over. Start the fuck.
Hello, my name's Michaela. So I don't believe there's a need to investigate if the police did anything wrong, but it doesn't look like you're taking that part seriously. So what guarantee do we have that this investigation team will not have a police bias? And why do we need to know if they followed the rules? The rules are the problem, not if they followed them or not. And when they go through this, we will have to ask the correct questions. So some of the questions we should ask is taking a look at the whole of the protests, not just the response to the ones on May thirtieth and June first. Like taking a look at the Blue Lives Matter protests or the counter protests where armed KKK members showed up. They should also look at the disparities in how the police approached both of these types of protests. And maybe even include in the, uh, Open NC protests. Because it is a systemic problem that they are targeting only the voices that harm them, that keep them from murdering black people. And in particular, why do we need to investigate or hear from investigation if chemical weapons are bad? That this isn't about whether they should have been used or not. This is about they should be banned in this country. You all need to defund APD by at least fifty percent. The system of police do not work. They do not provide for society that we live in. We need to use those funds on appropriate systems and use the funds on land and economic reparations for the people in our black community. Thank you for your time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Hi, my name's Dimitri Kyle. Sorry, my name's Dimitri Kyle and, um, I'm actually a Nashville native who has recently moved here from to Asheville. And I'm very proud to say that because it's a very beautiful city. Um, personally myself, I want to speak like on a sense of humanity in general and using these type of chemical warfare weapons on its own people is completely bizarre to me. And I think with this third party investigation, it's only common sense to understand that we have video footage of the whole thing. We have police and people alike that are a part of this. So like spending eighty thousand dollars to investigate something that you don't need investigating, you already have an answer to it. It's even more bizarre because we're wasting not only taxpayer money, but like money that the police could use themselves. And defunding them is a better opportunity to use the money where it actually matters, and that's on the general public. And honestly, Mayor Esther, I don't know you very well, but as any great politician understands that their agendas aren't always for the people, but more so to make ourselves happy and so we can go home and sleep at night. And that's what anybody wants. Um, my biggest mistake myself that I've made in life has to not listen to my own people. I'm in Asheville because I made a mistake and I didn't listen to the people that surrounded and supported me. And I'm not asking you to resign, but I'm asking you to listen. And I'm asking you to know yourself, not just like as a human being, myself, and maybe you included, believe yourself to be a child of God. This isn't a war on people and police. It's a war on humanity in general and returning each other against each other, if that makes sense. Um, personally, this third party investigation needs to be muted. It shouldn't even like come to light. And there's already evidence. And Asheville itself and humanity in general is smart enough to see what's already in front of their faces, to know what already happened. We have live streams. We've got video footage. Our own police department slashed water bottles. For what reason? I don't know. And then the own police chief was happy to say we'd rather confiscate than destroy water bottles of all things. So I think our time, effort and energy are being focused on all the wrong things and not the situation handled with humanity in general. And we need to chill out and understand that when we're awarded these positions of power, Mayor Esther, it's not for our own personal gain or our own personal agendas, but we are representing humanity and God as a whole. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please share your name.
My name is Jacqueline Larson. I live in Monford and I've lived in Asheville since nineteen ninety-three. And I'm very saddened on what's happened to our city. Eighty thousand dollars for a consultant study to tell us what we already know? Where is your leadership, Madam Mayor and Council? Where is your leadership? The police department reports to the city manager. They will do what they are instructed to do. So apparently, there's no leadership there. They were under stress too. My feeling is eighty thousand dollars for a study that will do nothing. It's just passing the buck. My request is along with a lot of my constituents in Asheville, we're fed up with passing the buck, spending eighty thousand, spending eighteen thousand to cover the Vance monument. This is ridiculous. You are following cities like New York, San Francisco. This is a sweet little city that has always been receptive of gays, trans, blacks. It's a wonderful place to live. And there are few people who are organized and are creating all this divisiveness. We need to come together as a community. That's not gonna happen if you spend eighty grand on a consultant study. Why not use the city police advisory board? And one of you and, uh, the city manager? Get your hands wet in this. It's a mess. We need leadership from council. We don't need passing the buck. How long have you all been in council and what have you done? This is a time to bring the community together, not to divide us. So, uh, there's a lot of passion represented on this. And hopefully you'll listen to us because eventually you're gonna be up for election, right? That's all I have to say. Good luck to you. I pray that you do the right thing. I'm finished.
Hi, this is Phil Miller, uh, longtime resident here of Asheville. Um, I think a firm educated on colonized law will conclude to support further colonization. Um, if it goes through, it certainly needs to be funded by the Asheville Police Department, uh, taken out of their funds. Uh, I hope you follow Congressman Hayes', um, advice and vote on the uses of tear gas instead of having, uh, outside a firm. If you need some consulting, I think someone else mentioned a public commission. Um, I'd be happy and I think many people would be happy to volunteer for that, probably save some money or we could get paid by the police funds. Um, this seems to be a Band-Aid, um, especially since it doesn't cover the Blue Lives Matter incident. And I'm wondering, uh, how many more firms and civil lawsuits will it take for you to address the systematic violence perpetrated by the police? We're all living in a pandemic right now. And I think we all know this will, is only gonna escalate more dissent and rebellion as people's lives are getting harder and harder to make livable, not even thriving. So I'm really here, like, what is the long-term plan? It can't be more commissions and more firms. We have to look at what our community values and try to have more alignment there. And I think we're all here, we can all raise our voice to that. Um, thank you for your time.
Check, check, hello?
Hello, we hear you. Please share your name.
Good day. Um, Honorable Manheimer and, uh, City Commission, Council folks, much appreciate your time. I know there's a lot of anger on this issue specifically. Um, there's a lot of people that I know that are actually afraid to give their names and publicly speak out on this matter because of the, um, the crowd, the riots, this, the, the cancel culture that some say exists these days. Whether or not that stuff's true or not, there is a fear by a lot of people to go against the, uh, the grain here. I understand that eighty thousand dollars seems like a whole heck of a lot of money. But I also understand that you folks are a government body. And when dealing with such a body, you have to understand that accountability comes before efficiency. And the screams of now, 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 we have to do it now, oftentimes don't consider a lot of the periphery. I'm sure a lot of the people that are talking about defunding the police by fifty percent have not even looked at the police budget to see how that's spent. I know some of the people running for council haven't read the city budget for crying out loud. But there's a lot of folks that are very passionate about this. And I appreciate the, uh, addressing of the issue of police brutality, how it's dealt with, et cetera, et cetera. But everybody needs to take a couple of deep breaths about this. And I do think that there is some value in having a, um, a firm examine the behaviors. There are some questions that, yeah, it's police officer heavy. And, uh, this is the same complaint that comes about a lot of CEOs that, uh, then go to work for government agencies. Well, that's the case because those are qualified people that know what to do. And they may have their biases, but we trust that when you take on such a role, you put those things aside and that your goal in approaching it would be to make the department better. Everybody knows this is a problem. So I highly doubt the firm is going to simply brush the issues under the table that exist. And I really think that we need to do our best in order to encourage accountability and be very, very wary of the now, now, now calls for extreme efficiency. Because that could create a whole heck of a lot of problems down the road. I intend to use some more time to address the defunding of the police issue specifically. But just take a look at the crime that has escalated. New York has had three hundred and fifty-eight percent increase in shootings just recently. Is it a good idea to do that now, especially without taking a look underneath the, uh, mat? Dig around a bit, see what is, uh, maybe not so appropriate, not so obvious to those who've. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Rachel Keener. And I just want to echo the majority of what I've heard from everyone else. Um, we have video footage from individuals. We have the police cameras. Um, there's plenty of knowledge and documentation of what happened. And I think that part of what feels so infuriating about this is that as we sit there and have a white man tell us this firm was selected. And then when you look at the firm and you see mostly a sea of white faces who represent law enforcement and attorneys. And then we appear that we're gonna take eighty plus thousand dollars taxpayer money to fund this. And all I can think is this is what institutionalized white supremacy looks like in action perpetuated by a neoliberal leadership group. If we just follow the chain of events, you have community members out in the streets because black people are dying. They're dying at the hands of our police. They're dying at not having access to homes. Well, for the rest of us, myself included, as a white person, have the ability to kind of build a life. And so we're gonna take, so there's harm inflicted. People are out there because people are being murdered. And then we're gonna take that same money from that community and we're going to fund a study and give it back to a white institution filled with the people who've been causing the harm? Do you not see how ridiculous this is? We need leadership. Yeah, the community is listening to the voices on this call and those that I'm having conversations with, we're over it. No more stalling, no more things about stakeholders, no more words about strategy that have emptiness to them. It is time for action. We have enough information. Do not, do not fund this study. It is not necessary. There are other ways to go about this. Thank you.
Hello, uh, this is Michael Jamar again. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, thinking of the past meetings and, uh, words that I've heard Brad say prior to, um, leaves me to believe that he is generally trying to find the best solutions on what's going on. Um, the fact that he was able to find this firm, uh, really does show the level of systemic racism that is, uh, in this world, in this country. Uh, only having roughly eight to nine, um, black bodies or, or, or people of color on this firm is super disheartening. Um, and that may have been the best solution, uh, or excuse me, that may have been considered the best firm at this, uh, point in time. But it kind of highlights the whole fact of we don't have enough professionals. Um, uh, people of color who are able to be a part of assessment like this. Um, if I were to recommend anything, I would say if this, um, is not passed, if, if, uh, if hiring this firm is not passed, uh, give that eighty thousand dollars, uh, or put that eighty thousand dollars towards the reparations, um, that, um, Black Asheville is asking for. If you are able to do this assessment for, for that period of time, it's only going to really point out some things that happened during that period of time. So instead of putting that Band-Aid over, um, it should start helping, that, that money should be used to start helping us build equity within, uh, the black community in Asheville. Um, unless you can find a firm that, that has, uh, more of a, of, of, of a mix of what's going on. And I definitely think of the portion of it is definitely going to be ethics. Um, and if I were to point out a couple of different situations on, uh, on things that would have to be assessed during, during this assessment. Um, one, my incident of being shot roughly, uh, ten feet away, uh, by a, by a rubber bullet coming out of one of your grenade launches. And two, I remember, uh, during one of our meetings, uh, for the Monday, Monday rally on the bridge, uh, there was a lady that reported almost being ran over, um, by, by one of the police officers in a vehicle. So if you would be able to see a body cam or a video of that, uh, to point out those direct, uh, those direct attacks on human beings, that would be great.
Mayor, that has been one hour of public comment.
Counsel, um, do you, do you, would you like to continue going or should we limit this to an hour? I do anticipate we'll probably have another hour, uh, under the reparations item and at least an hour of public comment at the end of the meeting. So, um, is there, is there anyone who objects to limiting public comment to an hour?
I, I do. I think we should just let them talk, let them speak their, speak their minds.
Okay. All right, counsel. Anyone else have an, have an opinion on what we are doing?
Esther, I think that as you've mentioned, we're gonna have another hour in just a minute and we're gonna have another hour at the end. And we will probably have multiple more hours of comment on these topics, um, over the next few, over the next few weeks and months. Um, I think I, I would, I would, I would say let's stop where we are. I think we're, we're hearing a lot of repetition. I think we've gotten the message. I, I also think there's a lot of things that people have said that we can address. Brad can probably address a lot of them. Brad can probably address a lot of them. Um, and if we're going to keep going, I would say let's stop and address some of the, uh, comments that we've heard before we keep going so that we don't continue to have people address things that, um, are not necessarily the case.
Okay, and Julie, we got you on your audio. Ooh, there's a clone mine. Um, councilmembers, any other, um, any other comments? Uh, you know, I'm listening to, and I do think we are getting into hearing a lot of repetition. Uh, and what I'm hearing is there is not support for this contract. Um, I, you know, it, how we got here, uh, if I recall, is that the city, after the protest, the city manager, um, it put forward the idea of having a review of the conduct, um, uh, during the protests. And counsel felt that it would be a more objective review if the counsel were to be the body to, um, oversee through the city attorney's office, uh, this, uh, an outside investigation. In other words, rather than having an internal review of our own practices, which some folks might say, well, if you have an internal review, you know, that, that, uh, isn't a trustworthy review. So, um, the idea here was to try to bring objectivity to it, to bring an outside review agency. And of course, what that means now is we're voting on a very expensive contract and we're not likely to find any, uh, third party reviewer that will perform a review for something, for a much different price than what we're looking at just due to the nature of the cost of consulting. Um, so I guess, you know, one question I have at this point is we, we have a motion on the table to approve this contract. Is there, after listening to the comments here, is there an interest in going in a different direction? Uh, is there an interest in, um, going back to the drawing board on this one? Uh, you know, I guess I just, I'm curious if, if there's still, um, just given how we got here was more, we were looking at it more from, uh, who manages the review process? Not, not, um, not so much, we, you know, we didn't, we, at the time that direction was chosen, we had, we did not know that it would be, we'd be looking at an eighty thousand dollar contract. So, so, uh, Brian, I, you raised your hand. Go ahead. Uh, you're muted though. Oh, there you go.
Okay. Um, well, I have to admit that I've been second guessing my decision to sign on to this request of an investigation, as, as we put it. Uh, and now being less like an investigation and more likely just hired a police consultant group to come in and sort of tell us what we want to hear or expect to hear. Uh, so I, I'm from second guessing my decision to regretting my decision. Uh, I no longer want to go this route. Uh, you know, four months from now, when we finally get a review, I'm on my way out the door in four months. I'll have no face so in, in, in how we move forward at all. Uh, not that it has to be me saying so, but there will be inaction for the next four months. So, um, uh, if it's possible to pull back my request for, uh, this inquiry, that's what I'm doing. But I, I will be voting against it either, either way. Uh, but I'd also like to say, if you are going to vote for it, please extend it to cover the Blue Lives Matter protest as well. There's no reason that that shouldn't be looked at and compared to how the police reacted at that one and to the Black Lives Matter protest.
Um, Brian, this is Julie. I have, I just have a question for you, just so I'm clear on what you're saying. Are you saying that you don't want a review at all of what, of the, of the activities and actions of this period?
Absolutely not. Uh, I, I'm saying we go back to a local investigation, uh, and, and, and do it ourselves. Uh, and be held accountable for our investiga- investigation.
So I, so my concern, and I think if, if we had, I, I mean, I, I think your, yours, I mean, my recollection is that you and Shanika initiated this request. And, and I thought your instinct was completely right, which is that when things go wrong, it is very difficult for the people who were involved in doing the wrong things to analyze them objectively. Um, and I still think that. And so I don't know how we can ask the police department to do a, a review of, of what has happened and expect that people would trust it. I don't understand how we can do that.
Well, initially, Brian and I came together, we had a discussion about, you know, being able as a public safety body to look into, um, some of the actions that occurred during that time from a policy perspective, um, and a procedural perspective. And from that point, I believe that is then when the city manager, along with Chief Zack, they volunteered to take the matter into their own hands. And then at that time, you know, there was some, um, some concern about the firm that was chosen by Chief Zack. Um, and then at that time, it just kind of escalated from that. Like what is the best method to go about to investigate APD at this point? Then it just, you know, grew to the point where we are right now. But throughout the entire time, Brian and I, and the Public Safety Committee wanted to maintain our right as elected officials to kind of ask questions even outside of the investigation. Um, but now that we are here and we see the price tag involved, um, and we're kind of hearing a lot of the public's concerns, I would say let's table it. Let's, let's put some thought to it before we rush off into a decision. Because, um, you know, contractually, the scope of it seems that, you know, we're not asking the right questions. I thought, I heard one guy say that. That was very, very brilliant. Are we asking the right questions? Are we uncovering something that will lead to a satisfying response for us? A satisfying response to the people who were injured? I think this requires more time. So, um, I would say, I would make a motion to table this discussion to maybe another day, maybe our next council session. It will give us time to digest what Brad has presented us. And thank you for your work, Brad. But to also, um, take into perspective the hours worth or the hour worth of comments that we've heard from the public, um, concerning this. And I think it's all very important. We get to interact with the report that Brad gave us and also interact to the public's reaction to what was delivered today. So I make a motion to, um, table the discussion until, um, the next council session.
And Ke- and I, Keith's got a, a comment as well. And I'm just wondering if, um, in the interim, is, is, uh, would it be possible for Public Safety to kind of look at how it would, how it would love to, to do this review sort of in-house with Public Safety's oversight? I mean, I think you had specific good questions to ask and you want answered. And I think, you know, the legal department may be able to work and review the policies and procedures and look and see if they're, um, you know, whether those were all followed, whether, uh, you know, whether, you know, whatever the recommendations are around changes and maybe expedite the process. I'm volunteering you, Brad, for a different line of work here. But, uh, I mean, to work in conjunction with Public Safety to sort of get to the bottom of some of the questions we know are the ones that are going to be relevant to the community, while not putting aside any of the other work we're trying to get, trying to get done at this point. Keep, yes, Keith.
Uh, Madam Mayor, hearing, uh, a majority of the Public Safety Committee here tonight, uh, the two members of counsel who initially brought this investigation forward, uh, I would be, uh, and I, I would be willing to acquiesce to whatever direction, um, they are willing to go, considering that they have, uh, laid out in their minds how they want to address this investigation, considering the information, uh, from the public as well tonight. And, uh, just let folks know on council that I'm willing to move in whatever direction, these individuals, Councilwoman Smith and Councilman Haynes. Uh, I, I believe, I don't want to speak for Julie, but I believe that she was clarified some of that as well. So whatever direction we're, they're willing to move into, I, I would support.
BJ, sorry.
Yeah, uh, Ma- Mayor, thank you. Um, just, I, I just wanted to echo a couple of things and, 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 and I realize, you know, I'm saying this as someone who's going to be here for two more meetings, this meeting included. Um, and, and, uh, you know, uh, and so what I have to say here tonight is, is, you know, is coming from, from a council member who obviously is worried about these issues. Um, but, but I also understandably am, am not going to be here when a lot of the hard work is going to be done. Um, I, I will say, you know, at the beginning of this, um, I, and I still am very supportive of the idea that counsel takes responsibility and oversight for this investigation. Um, you know, I think there were a lot of folks tonight, uh, who had preconceived notions in terms of what they expected the results to be. Um, I think as an elected body, uh, we have a duty to look at this in, in as objective way as we possibly can. We may have personal concerns, we have a, they have personal feelings. We have may had personal reactions about what occurred, uh, over that time period. Um, we have every right to have those. But as we sit here as elected officials, we have, in my opinion, a duty to get to the bottom of what actually happened, um, whether procedures were actually, actually followed, um, whether things should have been done. And if we are not satisfied, uh, with those rules, with those regulations, um, then we have the ability to change them. Um, I, I respectfully am, am concerned with the idea of this just going to public safety. Um, because I, I think this is at, given the, 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 and this is no disrespect to those folks on public safety, but given the concern and the reaction we have gotten from the city of Asheville, um, I think this is something that the full council needs to review and needs to be part of every step of the way. Um, I, I think to the, whatever you all decide to do, whether it's at the next, whether we or you, depending upon when this happens, um, I think you got to be clear about what the steps are, uh, that you're going to take in terms of trying to get down to the bottom of this. I actually think a third party like the firm that, that Mr. Branum has brought to us is the right way to go. They have expert expertise, uh, in terms of what are, you know, you know, what, what police officers do. And folks may disagree with that, right? And, and, and I understand that. They have every right to disagree with that. But I, 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 I think it's only fair, um, to the department, uh, if you will as well, to, to be able to have folks come in here, um, you know, who, who work in that field. Uh, and, and I think the, the, the goal of having counsel be the oversight body of this is there are many diverse voices on this council, you know, who can ask questions, right? Who can push, uh, and, and who I don't think are going to sit quietly if they get what they may view as a whitewashed report back. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I can respect if, if there's a majority of counsel who would want to table this tonight. My recommendation would actually be to go forward with, with this, with this firm. Because at the end of the day, I think you guys will need some professional expertise helping you to ask the questions about whether or not, uh, what was done there was, uh, was justified. And frankly, if they come back and say some of those things weren't justified, I think you've got a much better opportunity to be able to get those changes made, um, within, uh, within APD.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, I am on, uh, public safety also. Uh, I mean, so I felt like, um, you know, there were two question, I mean, two, two questions here. One, did what APD, was it legal? I mean, I think because there was, there were a lot of people out in the community who were saying that what they were doing was not legal. And so, and frankly, I don't know that this city council has the expertise to make that, to make that call. But I think even more importantly is, um, to have people who have expertise and know what other police, policing organizations throughout the country are doing, that they can give us recommendations on. It may have been legal, but was it the right thing to do? Was it something that we should be doing? Um, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that, uh, as well intentioned as we may be, we, uh, just don't have that expertise on council. Um, and, and I don't think that if we don't answer the question, was it legal first, then it's a little hard to get to what a recommendation's going forward. So I know it's expensive and, you know, maybe, maybe we can relook at the scope and say, maybe, maybe this council doesn't feel like that first question needs to be answered. Um, and, and really go with just saying, well, what are the, uh, recommendations? Looking at policies and procedures and saying, what are the recommendations going forward that the police department should, um, that we should consider?
Is my audio okay? Okay. Um, so I, I'm happy to, to pitch this back to public safety. Um, but what I would ask is that you all consider it and make a recommendation back to us about what happens next. Um, I, I, I agree with BJ. I think, I think responsibility for, for all, for this study and ultimately for what happened rests with all of us. Um, I wouldn't want to burden the three of you with managing it, nor do I want to be cut out of the process and in a way that I feel like I would be if it were, if you, if it was just public safety that was managing it. I mean, we all know that a whole lot of work happens in our committees. And if you're not on that committee, you just, you're not in the work in the same way. Um, and, and I want to be in this work. This is critical to moving forward in my mind. Um, so, so, so that's, I'm happy to do that. And, but I would love for Public Safety to come back and make a recommendation on process. Um, I am very concerned about the idea that we would do this work in-house somehow. I think if we did that, we would have another hour of public comment from people saying that it essentially exactly what they said tonight, which is that this will be a whitewashed study and, and, and won't tell us anything. Because it's going to be the people who, as I said before, the people who did the wrong, studying whether they did the wrong. You can't have that. You've got to have outside people. When you do something wrong, you have to have outside people coming in and, and with an objective mind and, and, and lens and looking at what you've done. And they have, they're not beholden to anybody. They don't know people on the force. They can call it like they see it. And I think that's what we need. Um, I, I will also point out that, um, to folks who think that this will just be a whitewashed study, that the report that we commissioned on, in the wake of the Johnny Rush, um, incident, uh, came back with maybe a dozen or more recommendations, most of which we implemented. So these studies are not, they are not, they're not to be put on a shelf. They're not whitewashed. They're not just to be ignored. Um, I think this council has a history of looking, getting these studies, looking at the recommendations and making those changes. Some really critical changes came out with it. Some really critical changes happened within EP, uh, APD as a result of that study. And I would expect the exact same thing right now, uh, coming out of this study.
Can you, will you real quick, just so we're clear when we're done with this meeting? You're, you're saying that you would like to see Public Safety make a recommendation around process. Can you flesh that out a little bit more?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if, if the rec, so I, I suppose the threshold question is, do we want to study it? We had a lot of people saying tonight, we have enough evidence, we don't need to study it. I think that's wrong. We have a lot of video evidence? We have no idea, none of us, sitting right here in this, on this screen or anybody out there listening and watching. We have no idea what was happening behind the scenes, why the police took the actions they took. We don't, we don't know that. I want to know that. And, and we, I also don't know what are the standard ways that police are supposed to act in situations like this. And did we, did our guys do it right or did they do it wrong? We don't have the, so, so I think we should study it. If there are, if there are those of you who think we shouldn't study it, then we can't learn anything from it. We can learn, we can learn a lot less from it, is my view. So I think we should, so a recommendation on, should we study it? And then a recommendation on if we should study it, what's the process? Are we doing it in-house?
Okay.
Are we having a consultant, third-party consultant? And then what are the specific questions? I mean, Brad has, has fleshed out a lot of them. I think those are all good. Um, I have a suggestion of adding, um, one to that about, you know, can their report indicate, um, of, talk about the evolving standards of policing? And because I, I, I agree with everybody who said the practice, the standard practice is part of the problem. We know that. So what are the evolving standards?
Right, like looking at communities that manage to not use tier g- Like looking at communities that managed to not use tear gas and, and other implements to manage protests, right? Look, what does that look like? Yeah.
That's right, that's right. And, and, and then the, the last two things I just want to say is again, because we heard a lot of this criticism, that Brad, I believe there were four people from this firm assigned to this team, two of them were people of color and one was a woman, is that correct?
That is correct. We felt that diversity on this team was absolutely essential. So the, the unit of the firm particularly is what we paid attention to. And yes, the four-person team had two people of color.
Okay.
And also to that, my, as a part of that, my understanding is the funding was coming from the police department's budget, correct?
Yes. That was the last point I wanted to make to people who were concerned about that. It is coming from the police department budget.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this contract, but now Shanika's made a motion to table it. So my understanding of that process would be, first of all, I'd need a second on that and we would, we would vote on the motion to table. And then what would happen is when we're ready to consider it, there would be a motion to take it off the table. And, and so it wouldn't necessarily be like when we do a continuance to a day certain, it would be when we're ready, there will be a motion to take it off the table. Or, I mean, you're saying that wrong, but.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to second the motion to table it.
Okay.
With the understanding about the process that will happen going forward.
And Brian, you're, you know, you're the chair of public safety, Gwen and Shanika both, are you all good with this assignment? The idea that you would come back with a recommendation around, should we do this at all? And if we do, what's the recommended process, given what we've heard, what we now know?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that too, but I also welcome the input of all of council on this. I'm not, I'm not trying to drive this alone by any means.
Yeah, I'm happy to do this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table. Are there any other questions or comments? I want to make sure I got everybody.
Mayor, if I can just chime in procedurally, I just want to make the council aware, the, the motion, which to table it or to defer consideration under our rules, takes it off of the calendar or agendas for 100 days. At the end of 100 days, it automatically expires. So at any point during there, council has the ability to revive it through another procedural motion, but I wanted to make you aware of that timeframe.
After or before the 100 days?
It automatically expires after 100 days and at any point during that period, any member of council can.
We can bring it back, right? Yeah, we don't have to wait 100 days. It's just, I got you.
Well, I hope this will come back to us next month. I mean, the further we get from this, the harder it will be.
Yeah. Something cannot perpetually lay on the table is what you're trying to tell us. It dies. It can die on the table after 100 days. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So I'm going to do a roll call vote, okay?
Mayor, this is the motion to table?
Yes, this is the motion to table. Yes. Okay. Vice Mayor Whistler.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
No.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Thanks, folks. All right, we, we're going to move on to the second and last item of new business, and that is a resolution supporting community reparations for Black Asheville. And Councilman Young will kick it off and then I think we're all going to participate in reading the resolution. So I will give it to, to you, Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got some, we're going to read this resolution tonight and I've, I've got some pretty lengthy comments, I guess, before we get into any comments on this or motion made. So without further ado, I will, I will do that and, and just really say that, that in this moment, we have, we have a lot of issues to deal with that affect all citizens. Moreover, the death of George Floyd has been a catalyst to the nation's largest civil rights movement. A movement that is, that is supported by Black Americans, but also by white allies to the Black community. I like to say allies that, that I'm thankful for, allies that I deeply appreciate. Nonetheless, this is a movement that largely describes the treatment of Blacks in America for a sustained period of time. The blood capital that we have banked to spend today to fight for significant change came predominantly not from our allies, but from Black men, women, and children who died to get to this, this very moment, generations, so to speak. Hundreds of years of, of Black blood spilled that basically fills the cup that we drink from today. And so when it pertains to policy that, that involves largely the lives of Black residents of the city of Asheville, I, I'd say this. I am a Black man with a Black family and anything that we do, in my mind, has to outlive the emotions of this present moment. Because the future, success of my own children and our current and future society depends on the sustained success of the systemic changes that, that we seek and, and, and not just the budgetary priorities in the moment, albeit important as well. We can multitask, but to say it, to say it bluntly, this, this is our moment. These are our lives and this is our capital. And I, I cannot speak for everyone else, but when I help craft policy that will affect the majority of our city's Black residents, I can truly say that my heart and my head are literally in the game. And I, I look, I look at my own children as my North Star, my, my guiding light for success, because, because their lives and their peers' lives depend on it. My dedication to those children, my children, truly drives my personal need to be successful with a policy such as this. And to those folks that are out there listening or watching, I want folks to understand that we will not be the last council or city staff to see these policies through. It is my mission to help make what I believe is the American dream tenable for basically all of our citizens. And with that said, with that said, I, I want to say that there is this, this concept, this concept that is the American dream, that, that we all have equal opportunity to generate the kind of wealth that brings meaning to the words, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, even though Black Americans, we've been denied that. So it's, it's simply not enough to remove statues. Black people in this country are dealing with issues that are systemic in nature. And it may feel good to some to see a symbol of oppression fall, such as a Confederate monument, or to join the rallying cry to defund the police. To that, I say power to the people. However, the same systemics that allowed statues to go up and the disparities in policing to continue are the very same systemics that recycle itself generation after generation after generation and still remain regardless of this council or its financial allocations. So the days of incremental change, I believe, have left us. And in the now, we require what I believe is to be institutional change to move forward. That is why the creation of generational wealth within our Black community is important. It will sustain families for future generations and is the key to the proverbial American dream. And as far as the other systemic issues, the institutional change, institutional change is exactly what we should be seeking and we are seeking, not incrementalism or gestures of allyship. We need to be made whole, and I've said it before, in areas of healthcare, education, employment, criminal justice, business ownership, homeownership, overall equity, and, and as I've mentioned before, generational wealth. And I don't want, I'm speaking for me now personally, I don't want to be made whole through one singular action or shuffling of money that another elected body can change at a drop of a dime. I want generations to me, to be made whole through systemic action, the same systemic actions that got us here and have produced policies that have outlived many dead politicians and generations of dead Black Americans. That is what we need to focus on. This resolution will ground us deeply and prepare the community to move forward on this promise that we're going to speak about tonight, regardless of what council, regardless of what city manager, and regardless of what staff will be here. We want to be grounded so this necessary work will be sustained. And anything less than systemic change is just feel-good politics in the moment, period. And with that said, I'll, I'll digress in my comments and, and allow anyone else who wants to say anything or we can do however the, the mayor wants us to proceed.
Counsel, do you want to, do you want to proceed with reading the resolution before we go further? Is that right? Or does someone want to unmute yourself if you, does, does someone want to say something before we read the resolution?
I have comments. I mean, I can make them before or after, seeing that I'm kind of kicking off the, the read of the resolution. I just don't want to make my comments. I think the first step towards rectifying any societal problem is to acknowledge that there is an actual problem in the first place. So in my mind, this resolution is a first step in that it names the vast list of historical wrongs that have been perpetuated against the Black community up until this very day. A lot of the feedback that we've gotten so far by email is that, you know, why should we pay for what happened during slavery? And, and my pushback against that is reparations is more than restitution for what happened during the transatlantic slave trade. It is a dark evil sin of chattel slavery that is the root of all injustice and inequity at work in American life today. So it is this institution that serves as the starting point for the building of strong economic floor for white America while attempting to keep Blacks forever subordinate to its progress. So I, I wish that our educational system would have done a, a, a greater job at revealing the origins and the lasting impacts of the many dimensions of racism, so that accepting these truths early on in life and building empathy so that we can have, you know, even analysis of what injustice in America was like for Black people, it, it will make a United States more possible. So this, this resolution goes a long way in articulating that. I appreciate the resolution and that is why I'm dedicating my yes vote tonight to honor my elders, both past and present. I would like to see the latter part of the resolution be therefore resolved, the solution part of the document to, to show that these are not just flowery words on paper. This will mean that any report generated by a commission or anyone tasked within the Asheville city staff will come back with tangible programs that, that have realigned item monetary resources attached to them. And this means full funding, fully funding our transit system and affordable housing, but also mapping out our assets, our, the city assets, while looking at other municipalities who are doing great jobs at coming up with innovative ways to address the generational wealth gap in Black communities. And I trust that what's, what will come out of this, the direction of this resolution will give, bring us back some shovel-ready projects and, and some fully funded programs that actually deal with things like the discriminatory use of eminent domain. It hurt us, it hurt us deeply. And with that being said, I want to read something that was gathered some years ago. It impacted my life when I returned to Asheville. It is a publication by the North Carolina Humanities Council, and this was written by Ms. Priscilla Endaye. She's also a member of the South Side community, like I am, a member of the South Side community. And this kind of quantifies what was lost just in the South Side, what we call the South. In the East Riverside area, said by the late Reverend Wesley Grant, we lost 1,100 homes, six beauty parlors, five barber shops, five filling stations, 14 grocery stores, three laundromats, eight apartment houses, seven churches, three shoe shops, two cabinet shops, two auto body shops, one hotel, five funeral homes, one hospital, and three doctors' offices. It's been said that what happened urban renewal in this city, not, not slavery, but urban renewal in this city, came up to about over 400 acres of decimated homes and businesses. And this urban renewal project locally was the largest in the southeastern part of the United States. This is what impacts me day to day. This is what still impacts this community. Anybody who goes throughout this community and you interact with Black people, both young and old, this is felt, you feel it, not only in our bodies and the way we interact and psychologically. So we took a pause a couple of weeks ago on our budget adoption to have some real, real conversations. And these conversations were, would generate how we increase equity in this community. So I want to say to the professional staff here at Asheville City, the city of Asheville, that we need to bring a red pen to the table to actually circle expenditures and, and to really show how they directly relate to the stated goals within this resolution. And with that being said, if no one else has a comment to make, I'll go into reading my portion of the resolution. Gwen?
Just, just one second. I think Asheville, through this resolution, really has shown leadership. I was excited to see that the state of California just also is going to study reparations and I, I just hope that we will be just that, maybe a little spark that will really get this conversation not only going in Asheville, but in North Carolina and across the country. And so I'm looking forward to voting on this, voting for this resolution.
BJ?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Yep. Thanks. And I, I wanted to, I'll be brief, and I actually wanted to direct these comments, my comments, to those of you who may be skeptical about what we're trying to do here tonight. I, I want to go to what, what Councilwoman Smith talked about in, in the beginning of her, her comments, which was the, the recognition that we have a problem here in the city of Asheville. That is clear here. And, and regardless of whether or not you want to use the term reparations or otherwise, the data is. the data is clear that we have significant disparities in this city. You can look at the numbers that are put out by the state of Black Asheville. You could look at the, the racial, uh, the, the equity gap, if you will, at the school district. If you look at those, those datas, the, the, the issue there is, is one of race. And, and personally, I, I don't think we can shy away from that. So, I, I think it's critically important for a city like Asheville to look at that. Because you, that, that doesn't benefit anyone. To have, to have a significant equity gap in, in, in the city, it holds us back. It holds us back as community members, it holds us back into what this city can do. So, so I think whether you want to call it reparations or whatever you want to call it, I think significant investment in, in the Black community is absolutely warranted. And it's warranted not just from the perspective of, of the moral, which, which I think, you know, Councilwoman Young and Councilwoman Smith have eloquently talked about here. But again, for those of you who are skeptical, think about it from the practical perspective as well. We, we don't want our city held back by these, by these gaps. And if the moral argument is enough to sway you, I, I hope thinking about this and thinking about, as Councilmember Yum talked about, the American dream, we want everyone to be successful in Asheville. We absolutely want to do that. And we need to invest in all of our communities here. But in particular, we need to understand the disparities that we have in our community now. And we need to rectify those to the extent we can. And, and that's why I'm absolutely supportive of what council is doing tonight with this resolution.
Sure, since we're, since we're doing comments beforehand, I just want to say this is, um, this is, uh, it's an amazing moment. It's, um, it's sobering and somber, also incredibly exciting and also incredibly way overdue. This resolution, you know, it doesn't do, it doesn't fix everything. I think I've heard some criticism that, you know, it's just vague and where is it going to actually get us? It is just the first step. As Shanika said, it is the first step, but we have to take this first step if we are to begin to undo the, uh, the centuries of wrongs that have been perpetuated on, um, on, uh, our Black neighbors and friends and communities. Our, the challenge for us and our work going forward is to do exactly what Keith called for, which is for us to really intentionally address the, the policies, the programs, the funding, the systems that have landed us where we are right now, which is in a place of great disparity. And to really address the obstacles that have kept Black and Brown communities from being successful in, in all the ways that, um, that their white counterparts are, that the rest of us are. I hope we will create new policies, programs, funding, structure, systems that will replace the ones that we have now and, and really go a long way to repairing the damage that has happened and that continues today. It's not in the past, it continues today. And, and not only, I mean, Keith is right, this is not just about the budget, but the budget is the big stick that we carry. And we've heard a lot in the past, I've heard a lot since I've been on council, that budgets are moral documents. And I, I think that is true. And we, we have, we need to do a lot. I don't know how we're going to do it, uh, but we need to do a lot. We need to shift a lot of where we're spending to, to, to make it the moral document that it needs to be to create the systemic change that we're trying to accomplish. It, it will not happen overnight and it will not happen, we cannot do this alone. And I hope people have noted that the resolution is aimed not just at the city, the city, at the county, at, um, at standalone institutions in our community. We all bear the, the responsibility, the burden of, of having created it, and we all bear the responsibility of needing to fix it. And, and that is everything from the largest corporation that is based here to the smallest organization. We all have a role. And, and I really do want us to think big. We need to be thinking very differently about how we do things going forward, what we fund. The two particular things that, and I have found myself saying this a lot since I've been on council, you know, well, we don't fund education, well, we don't do health, that's the county, go talk to the county. Well, the county ain't doing everything that needs doing. And if that means that the city needs to step up and we need to start funding and investing in schools and we need to start investing in our healthcare system and excessive, accessibility to healthcare and making particular investments in women or children or families, then that's, then that's what we need to do. Now sadly, I won't be around for most of this. I'm, I am time limited, I have five months. But I will be a partner with the city and with council and with staff in this work going forward. Wherever I am, I will be a partner and hopefully I will be in a position to be having some of these same conversations at a very different level of government that also needs to happen. And I pledge that I will endeavor to lead those conversations in, in those forms. Thanks. Brian, anyone else, Brian, did you want to say anything?
Well, I had planned on saying something after the resolution was read and, and approved, but since everyone else has had their go, I'll, I'll, I'll do mine. First, I would like to thank Councilman Young for taking the lead in bringing this resolution to council. And secondly, acknowledge that while this resolution provides a great opportunity to begin reparations, it is only the first step and will require the continued support of this and future councils to move towards fruition. I would also like to point out that this can direct, can directly tie into the call for defunding the APD. It seems only fitting that an institution that has, has historically brought so much harm to Black people could and should provide, through a 50% reduction in their budget, the much-needed resources to begin the reparation process. That's it.
Thank you. Council, we're, we're about to read this resolution. I too want to thank Councilman Young for bringing this forward. And I want to thank all of you for your thoughtful comments tonight and for your bravery in moving forward on this. We are in this together sometimes in the sense that we receive a lot of comments from the public that everyone else doesn't see, mostly via email. And this is unfortunately still a divisive topic, although more momentum growing around it, I think, in Asheville and North Carolina and throughout our nation. But reading some of the comments we received from folks that don't support a resolution like this, I imagine it must be extremely painful to read those comments. And I'm, so I want to compliment you on your, you know, on your bravery to move this forward. This is not for the faint of heart to, to try to work on tough topics like this. So, so thank you all so much. And I, you know, and I want to thank the community. I mean, while we did receive some, um, some comments from folks that don't support it and, and, and very, in particular, folks that don't live in Asheville that wanted to tell us they don't, they don't support it. We did receive a lot of support from folks right here in Asheville. And that helps so much when you're trying to do something that's hard, hard to do and somewhat controversial, to hear that outpouring of support. So, thank you to the community for, for those of you who have already chimed in and made it clear that this is something you support. And the Racial Justice Coalition for, for working with Councilman Young to bring this forward. So, thank you for your work. So, we're, we're going to read this resolution and then we're going to have a motion to adopt it and then we will take public comment. So, Councilman Smith, if you could kick us off in reading the resolution.
Resolution supporting community reparations for Black Asheville. Whereas Black people have been unjustly enslaved and whereas Black people have been unjustly segregated and whereas Black people have been unjustly incarcerated and
Whereas Black people have been denied housing through racist practices in private, in the private realty market, including redlining, steering, blockbusting, denial of mortgages, and gentrification. And whereas Black people have been denied housing, displaced and inadequately housed by government housing policies that include discriminatory VA, FHA practices, urban renewal, and a variety of local and federal affordable housing programs. And whereas Black people have been consistently and widely impoverished by discriminatory wages paid in every sector of the local economy, regardless of credentials and experience. And whereas Black people have experienced disproportionate unemployment rates and reduced opportunities to fully participate in the local job market and
Whereas Black people have been systemically excluded from historic and present private economic development and community investments, and therefore Black-owned businesses have not received the benefits of these investments. And whereas Black people have been segregated from mainstream education and within present-day school programs that include AG, AP, and honors. And whereas Black students have experienced the denial of education through admission, retention, and graduation rates of every level of education in Western North Carolina and through discriminatory disciplinary practices. And whereas Black people historically and presently receive inadequate, if not detrimental, healthcare as exemplified by disproportionate morbidities and mortality rates that result from the generational trauma of systemic racism, discriminatory treatment by medical professionals, and discriminatory medical practices such as involuntary sterilizations, denial of adequate testing, denial of preventative and curative procedures, and
Brian, you're muted.
Sorry. Whereas Black people have been unjustly targeted by law enforcement and criminal justice procedures, incarcerated at disproportionate rates and subsequently excluded from full participation in the benefits of citizenship that include voting, employment, housing, healthcare. And whereas Black people have disproportionately been forced to reside, reside in adjacent to or near brown zones and other toxic sites that negatively impact their health and, and property. And whereas Black people have disproportionately been limited to the confined routes of travel provided by public transportation and
Whereas Black people have disproportionately suffered from the isolation of food deserts and childcare deserts. Whereas systemic racism was created over centuries and will take time to dismantle. And whereas federal, state and federal governments have a responsibility to adopt program, policies, and funding to address reparations.
Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Asheville, that city council of the city of Asheville, one, apologizes, makes amends for its participation in and sanctioning of the enslavement of Black people. Two, apologizes and makes amends for its enforcement of segregation and its accompanying discriminatory practices. Three, apologizes and makes amends for carrying out an urban renewal program that destroyed multiple successful Black communities. Four, calls on other organizations and institutions in Asheville that have advanced and benefited from racial inequity to join the city in its apologies and invites them to address racism within their own structures and programs and to work with the city to more comprehensively address systemic racism. Five, calls on the state of North Carolina and the federal government to initiate policymaking and provide funding for reparations at the state and national levels.
Six, directs the city manager to establish a process within the next year to develop short, medium, and long-term recommendations to specifically address the creation of generational wealth and to boost economic mobility and opportunity in the Black community. Seven, fully supports its equity department staff and its work and encourages the city manager to utilize their talents when forming policy and programs that will establish the creation of generational wealth and address reparations due in the Black community as mentioned above. Eight, seeks to establish within the next year a new commission empowered to make short, medium, and long-term recommendations that will make significant progress toward repairing the damage caused by public and private systemic racism. Other local government, community organizations may also be invited to have representation on the commission. The task of the Community Reparations Commission is to issue a report in a timely manner for the consideration by the city and other participating community groups for incorporation into their respective short and long-term priorities and plans. Accountability for achieving equity will be enforced in the appropriate offices. The report and the resulting budgetary and programmatic priorities may include, but not be limited to, increasing minority homeownership and access to other affordable housing, increasing minority business ownership and career opportunities, strategies to grow equity and generational wealth, closing the gaps in healthcare, education, employment, and pay, neighborhood safety, and fairness with criminal justice. Nine, calls on the city manager to give at a minimum a biannual update to the city council on the progress of work performed pursuant to this resolution. Read, approved, and adopted this the 14th day of July, 2020. So, with that, council, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Councilman Young, so moved.
Shanika, second.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Staff, do we have folks interested in commenting on this item?
We do, mayor. We currently have about 25 people in the caller queue.
Okay, callers, if you could please state your name and you will have three, I should have said this at the beginning, you'll have three minutes to provide your comments. That's what we always provide. And Maggie, the clerk, who's sometimes on the screen, does have a timer. Thank you. It might just be taking a second here to queue up our first commenter.
While we're waiting for that, I'd like to just make a suggestion for folks to consider. Not, we can, we're not going to figure it out tonight. But I'm just wondering if we can perhaps create this commission in a little bit of a different way, if we can involve the community more in identifying people who would be appropriate to be on it, help in selecting recommendations, and I'll stop.
Okay.
Uh, Bellmore Thomas, you're live.
Bellmore? Hello?
We can hear you, please share your name.
No, I'm so sorry, I thought it was three fifths in the, the recording said I was three fifths in the queue. I'm, I'm so sorry, my name is Thomas Bellmore. Yeah, this is a little embarrassing, I'm not, I'm here in Asheville. I, um, earlier I joined the queue, which I think is maybe what's happening. I joined the queue when Esther Manhammer said that we weren't, said that we were not, that we need to keep, stay relevant to the topic when we were discussing the resolution to contract with the, the consulting firm that you all firm that y'all voted no on. I just want to say those comments were relevant, but we all heard, and I think, but I'm glad that y'all heard, I'm surprised y'all, you know, changed your choices, what we all were saying was to, we're not asking for review, we know what has happened, and we want action rather than theater, and we would like to dismantle this police rather than reform it. Julie Mayfield said that these budgets are ethical documents. And what the people of Asheville are saying is we need to dismantle the police and instead use those resources to change the way that we're acting. We need to respond to emergency, we need to respond to public safety in ways that are different. We've been saying that for weeks, and I'm glad that y'all are listening. What we don't want is more calls to go to committee, what we want is immediate action, and y'all have heard what that action is. We, you do not need to be using violence against citizens, especially black citizens, especially protesters. We are seeking the defunding of the Asheville Police Department. We are asking for a ban on excessive use of force on civilians by Asheville Police Department. And we're asking for people to be held accountable for choices that were made, to cause, you know, by choices that were, we're asking people to be held accountable for their actions at the beginning of June that led to excessive force on Asheville citizens. We're not looking for police reform or for people to, or for endless delays in action. Also, I call for Chief Zach's resignation and for Esther Manheimer's resignation. Thank you very much for your time, and I really appreciate these being held remotely, it's so helpful, I think it's helpful for democracy and just like...
Hello, this is Michael Jamar again. Actually, just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I was hoping that you guys would go ahead and go back in and open up for comments towards the, towards the idea of hiring a private firm. I think when talking about that private firm, it was kind of, I wouldn't say skipped over, but it was hard to identify the fact that you would have two black folk that would be doing the assessment, including a female body. So I personally would have said yes on that one there. As far as all this moving forward, if you want to think about what the main difference between, you know, one of the biggest differences, it's the ability to have space for yourself. You look around Asheville, you look around all these communities, the thing that white people have one of the biggest advantage of, besides the fact that they have a huge amount of equity, it's the fact that they have space. If you look at the difference between the Shiloh community and the PVA community, if you look at the difference between Hill, Carson, Burton, there is far more disparity within those groups. If you, and to mention that Shiloh and Burton have, you know, started the process of being gentrified all at the same time, too. We need more things to do here, we need more things to do here, we need more things to be able to keep black citizens to stay here, we need the youth to find a reason to stay here. We need more usage of these funds to be able to create more space for creativity, for equity building, and for wanting to be a part of this city and not be pushed out by police officers on a regular basis, to not be stared at strangely, or not to feel alone when you walk into downtown, which had a historically black section, which is now completely whitewashed. Besides the Miami Cultural Center, it's a sad thing to see, but I'm glad that y'all are making these steps towards using funds to move forward with reparations. I will be following this process and would love to be, find a way to contribute in this type of way. Yeah, understand that space is what we need.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, you can, please share your name.
Hi, this is Taysha Etheridge, and I'm calling in as a black woman born and raised in Asheville, North Carolina. I just want to say I've grown tired of the amnesia that is rampant in this city as y'all try your hardest to erase or forget what this city has put black and brown people through. I'm honestly growing tired of the lip service, your list of apologies are less than sufficient. That money not only needs to come from the state, it will come from defunding 50% of APD's budget. The local government constantly regurgitates this pathetic attempt at equity and inclusion in the city as they destroy neighborhoods, inflate property taxes, and push black and brown people out of their homes and neighborhoods. I mean, lest not we forget, East End, South Side, East Riverside, Stumptown, Hill Street, and Burton Street, you tore through these neighborhoods in the 50s and 60s in the name of blight and renewal to racially cleanse a city that then and continues to thrive on tourism. You destroyed black businesses and homes and placed the top of them highways named after slave owners and their kin. You continue to do this. Mayor Manheimer, you once told me that if a city isn't growing, it's decaying, but you have yet to show how that growth benefits the residents who actually live here. You continue to erect hotels and white businesses in the name of progress, which to me is disrespectful and a reminder that you aren't and never planned on doing work to rectify your egregious acts that allow for the percentage of black and brown people on the census to dwindle year by year. This pitiful shroud you erected around the Vance Monument is an exact representation of your inability to respect and address the needs of the black community in Asheville. You cover them up, silence my community, diverge from their requests, and wait for people to grow tired of asking for change. May I say, urban renewal was Negro removal, and its new alias gentrification, which you feel is so necessary for the city, is made of the same design. I demand that you engage with the resolution documented, provided by the Racial Justice Coalition, and begin the development of a comprehensive plan for the reparations in the region. You have to do more than a cute rehearsed speech of your recognition and apologies. I will hold you to these apologies and monitor you closely until you start enacting change for the black community. To not do this is to solidify your inability to govern the city, and that means that you and anyone else should step down from your seat. And frankly, with how you've handled things so far, you should do this anyways.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, sir, we can hear you, please share your name.
Yes, thank you. Yes, my name is David Greenson, I'm a city resident. I want to applaud your support for this reparations resolution, which we all know is just the beginning of the process that's needed. Members of the black community can explain far better than me why black people need reparations. I want to tell you why white people like me need black people to get reparations, because until that happens, we can't heal either. It's important, it's crucial, to center the people who have been harmed, but we also have to recognize that the person doing the harming is also harmed, and the people who enable and support the person doing the harming are also harmed. George Floyd lost his life, full stop. There's nothing that compares to that, but we have to recognize that before George Floyd lost his life, Derek Chauvin lost his humanity, and he didn't lose it on his own, he lost it because the white people who paid his salary and who control his city pushed him that way. White people, we have to realize that we are complicit and our souls are in jeopardy. I'm speaking out today to save my own soul, because I'm responsible for the beating of Johnny Rush in August of 2017. I may not have hit him or choked him or tased him, but I paid the man who did. I paid the city officials who created the condition that put Johnny Rush and Chris Hickman on a collision course. Why was Johnny Rush out late that night so that he could be harassed by Chris Hickman? Because he worked a long shift at the Cracker Barrel, because I live in a city that continually creates only low-wage jobs like that for black people in order to line the coffers of the wealthy who profit from tourism. My city does that with my tax dollars, and so I'm responsible. Until I'm part of repairing that damage, of no longer paying police officers to harass black people, of no longer paying city officials to approve more hotels and push more black people into low-wage jobs, uncomplicit in the harms that are going to inevitably result. Asheville needs reparations because anything less than that's not going to work. Racism will continue its stranglehold on our city. It's not enough to change police policies, banning practices like chokeholds won't work. They tried that in New York, Eric Garner is still dead. If all we do is change policies, then more black people are going to die and their blood's going to be on our hands. It's not enough to simply defund the police department, although that's incredibly crucial. Having social workers on the front lines is a lot better than cops, but it's not enough, it doesn't change the conditions themselves. And these conditions aren't accidental. White people like me created them, white people like me maintain them. And until white people like me and the white people in positions of power in this city declare that it's enough, we are not going to maintain these conditions anymore, we're going to reimagine not just the police, but our whole social structure, we're going, we're not going to address all the harm that we have caused and are causing, and we're going to continue to live under that moral shadow. So once again, I applaud you for all your support of this resolution, let's get to work making it happen.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, we can hear you, please share your name.
Yes, I'm Marion Douglas Ungaro, and I'm an Asheville descendant, black American, I'm in Washington, not that far away, Washington DC. I have been a member of Old Buncombe County Genealogical Society, I've been down to Asheville several times, I have family who are still in the area, not that far away, because of course, we know we have the East Tennessee and Western North Carolina, that's a cultural region, it's not just Asheville. I wrote an article, and it was published back in 2000 in the Madison County Heritage Book about my family, a Gudger white family history. I'm pretty sure I was the only black American contributor. And so I know that my great-great-grandfather, my families are Gudgers, they were young, a family that was not black and was not through slavery, are Rices who are mainly over in Marshall. So my family goes way back in that area, both the black American enslaved, my great-great-great-grandfather lived on Lower Hominy Creek, he was listed in 1870 Buncombe, or yeah, Buncombe County Census. So I have been, you know, looking at this issue for a very long time, I've also worked internationally in human rights. The situation, I believe, I've worked in Srebrenica, in Bosnia, Croatia, Haiti, Kosovo, et cetera. And what has happened in Asheville is ethnic cleansing of the black American community. My family has scattered as far away as Washington State from the mountains, from right there, Walla Walla, Washington, Kansas, Indiana. And so we want to reconnect, and we want, we want, we need healing, we need healing, and this includes all the way back, also, the Native Americans. Asheville, Buncombe County is Cherokee territory, so we, as black Americans, we cannot exclude Native Americans from this, nor vice versa. And so I think there's a lot of people in the mountains who understand this is between not just the black Americans and the white folks, but we got to talk about the Cherokee Nation also, and I look forward to this, so if I can help out, I'm very happy to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Bacchus, and first I'd like to thank the last caller for, and also so many of the callers and council people who've spoken tonight, and I echo a lot of what people are saying and calling for. And while it's important to take down monuments to white supremacy and to pass resolutions such as this one for reparations to black Asheville, we simultaneously need to talk about how we are preserving at the same time systems of white supremacy, namely, the system of policing, which when you study history, oh, pardon me, my phone beeped, you learn that policing was created in order to maintain the practice of enslavement of black people and subsequent and sustained oppression. So here we have a really powerful moment and opportunity to heal. If we are able to abolish the practice of policing, we can divert funding, which is a lot of money, to other systems that do not have the same disturbing, toxic, and discriminatory history that policing has. So when we're talking about defunding, we also need to be talking about the goal of abolishment and how we can have healthier systems of organizing and communicating and working together. The passivity of liberalism has kept true progress from happening. We hear a lot of people say, oh, the civil rights movement has been going on for so long, well, why a lot of traction wasn't able to happen is because of white liberalism. So let's not continue to make the same mistakes of denial and avoidance when we have some really direct and meaningful paths that can be taken. And we can enact institutional societal change and societal change through the abolishment of policing and create deep substantive reparations and pay deep substantive reparations to black people of Asheville and descendants of people who were enslaved here and also had their properties and businesses destroyed and stolen. We need to create opportunities for self-determination of black Ashvilleans, access equity and reparations in the form of land, housing, and business ownership. Echoing council members Young and Smith's powerful words around the history here of urban renewal, I'd like to bring up the neo-colonial practice of mixed-income redevelopment practice. I thank y'all for your time.
Mayor, we have three callers that joined the queue over two hours ago, and we're not able to access them. So at this time, I would like to invite Sarah Benoit, Walter Lieber, and a telephone number ending in 10-5-6 to call back, and we will move you to the top of the queue. For now, we're going to move on with the other callers in the queue.
Okay, and we apologize for technical difficulties using this system to everyone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello.
Sorry.
Hi, my name is Pearl Foster, I am an Asheville native. I am honestly beyond furious... I am honestly beyond furious that we, the people, are obviously, once again, being plainly ignored by our city leadership. I know that hardly anyone, maybe one caller was in favor of passing the resolution, just as an example, um, and the, the study, to study the policing. Um, I truly believe that we can handle this with a civil forum of people speaking openly and honestly with council and Asheville Police Department. Esther Manheimer and the rest of you are doing nothing but proving why the people are distrusting you to begin with. Your irrationality and fake progressivism is harmful to my home. It will not be tolerated anymore. Think carefully of your actions and inaction specifically over the last few months. Why would anyone trust you? I'll give you a hint, we don't. You allowed war crimes to be committed against us and are blatantly enabling the liar David Zach. And yes, I may not be a bomb expert, but stomping and stabbing supposedly suspected explosives makes absolutely no sense. It's honestly beyond disturbing that y'all are still playing this game publicly. We've made our demands clear. Fifty percent of the Asheville Police Department's budget should be invested in long-term safety strategies, including supporting Black startups and businesses, eliminating the racial opportunity gap in Asheville City Schools, and funding an all civilian oversight committee with the power to hold the Asheville Police Department and individual officers accountable. We demand that the Asheville City Government remove the Vance and Robert E. Lee monuments and replace them with monuments that honor the many Black Ashvilleans who have built this city. We demand that streets be named, that streets named after former slave owners also be replaced with names of historic local Black leaders. We demand not just individual accountability for officers after lethal or violent use of force, but for accountability for the entire Asheville Police Department. We demand an end to the systematic harms inflicted upon all Black people, including Black, trans, queer, and gender nonconforming peoples. This resolution is a crucial first step in a long overdue process. Our city government and city leadership must take responsibility for the pivotal role it has played in hundreds of years of oppression of Black people in our region, from slavery to urban renewal. The city must commit to concrete plans for assuring that those harms do not continue and for remedying the damage that's already been done. To put it simply, you must stand with us or get out of our way. Enough is enough, we will not settle for less than true justice, so hope you wake up soon. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Sarah Benoit, and I live in West Asheville. I just wanted to call tonight to, um, speak my support for this resolution. I'm extremely excited to see this, uh, as something that we are putting forward here in the city. Over the last couple of years, I've talked, I think, many times at council meetings about the need for real innovation and real leadership. And I see this as definitely a move towards that. I think, you know, I echo, I could echo a lot of what everyone who's said, uh, so far this evening. I certainly support many of the things that have been brought up. Uh, I think it's incredibly important that if, you know, we're going to be moving forward and creating real, long-lasting change, the Councilman Young talked about, that it is absolutely essential that we be willing to step away from status quo thinking. And however we have been handling these situations in the past, it hasn't worked. So I think that comes through tonight, as I listen to a lot of other community members share their frustration at being asked to work within a system that feels very uncaring and very heartless and as if it has been something we've been waiting to have worked for years and years and years, and there's never any real progress. That, that level of frustration, I think, is coming through because we are so in need of a real stepping away of how things have been done. Um, I just, I hope that this resolution is the tip of an iceberg for Asheville. I hope that we can stand up, if I imagine that we have the power to do, as a real beacon of light, especially in the southeastern part of the United States. Um, to me, all I've been able to think about tonight is how George Floyd was killed. And then after that, Rayshard Brooks was killed. After that, police threw elderly people on the ground. After that, all of these things continued to happen. So when you feel that level of frustration about trying to reform things or hiring consultants or, you know, all of this kind of stuff that, you know, we kind of want that now, 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 like we need it to change now. I just want us all to remember, because bad things have been happening for a long time. The police have been behaving in a way that's unacceptable for a long time. And so we don't have another four months, another five months, another however long to wait for change because people's lives are really dependent on that change happening right now. So I just really thank you all for what you're doing. And please keep doing it like this. And keep innovating, keep changing, because we have to be able to move forward as a community and be resilient in the face of all other things. We can't do that, we can't do that if we don't innovate and move forward together.
Good evening, uh, this is Claudia Conain. Um, I am, I have been a resident of Asheville since 2003. I'm white. I have, um, I moved my family here to raise my kids. Um, we have been enjoying all the privileges and wonderful things about Asheville that as white persons, um, we receive here and experience here. The longer I've lived here, the clearer it's become to me that that is for white people only. Um, I would like to thank Councilman Young and Councilwoman Smith for their work and for their testimony, testimony tonight. Um, and I would like to direct myself to the white people on city council. And I want to urge you not to be scared to be an example for the city and for the county and for our state and for the rest of the country and even internationally. And to show true leadership, I agree with one of the previous commenters that for us white people, it's a moral imperative to move towards real progress. Not lip service to progress, not more of the same programs and reform, but, um, reparations. And strongly in favor of this, adopting this resolution. And, um, I trust that you will all do the right thing here. Thank you for your time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, please share your name.
Uh, this is Rob Thomas, Asheville native, um, Black man. So, um, I just want to say that, that, you know, I definitely appreciate the passing of this resolution. Um, this has been long overdue. I don't even need to get into much of the history. Uh, we have several council members that just did that, several community members that called in and did that. Um, but, you know, I would also like to thank you all just for, just for seeing the importance in this initiative and passing it. Um, but I need to get into something else, which is, you know, the other pieces to this, right? This is just the beginning. And just as the council member stated, it's going to be really imperative that the county buys into this. Um, because what has happened historically is whenever issues have been brought up before, uh, elected officials, you know, the city may say that, well, this isn't our department. Go to the county, the county says that this isn't their department. And, and a lot of the things that need to be redressed are, you know, a conglomeration of both, both, uh, agencies. And that is the only real way that this will work. And so, you know, I, I really appreciate you all signing on. We really need council in, I mean, not council, we really need the commissioners in on this as well to make this successful. And, um, also, I just want to reiterate that, that, you know, the community will definitely be watching this process throughout. You know, um, to make sure that actions are happening around the words that, that are on this piece of paper. I'd say this is a really, really good gesture as far as the foundation of what we can build. You know, the potential that can come out of this document is amazing. Um, I look forward to, to actually watching how this will play out and assisting wherever it is that I can and the small roles that, that I play in this whole process. Um, and I would like to also encourage you to make sure that this is being guided by Black community members. You know, those are the ones that, that need to be running this on whatever committee or whatever board or whatever team, whatever work group that is created that will organize this and also want to eat, want, want to reiterate, you know, the words that are in the resolution, generational wealth. Wealth is measured throughout the world by land and real property. That is what we need. The city and the county has a lot of land, you know, um, a, a whole lot. And we need finances to develop, to develop the, the land and, uh, do what it is that, that we need to do with it to kind of address the situation that we're in. Um, I spoke at a Buncombe County Public Input Session. I just want to add, we're headed on the right track. Thank you, uh, thank you all for what you're doing.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please share your name.
Excellent. Hi, my name is James Tempel, again. Um, of course you vote yes for this, we know it's long past time for this. Yes, you vote yes, that's the only thing to do today. Everyone else is going to address the police, so I'll skip it. Um, I hope that Ms. Campbell will put her part on this resolution onto her shortlist rather than to, onto her log back, long back, long. I'd also like to suggest something along the lines of trying to mandate that forty or fifty percent of all economic and activity initiated by the city of Asheville be spent inside of our Black community. If the needed businesses don't exist, create them. Give them the loans, give them the contracts, start them. It's, we are in the South, it is on us to lead, to show how this can be done, how we can make, I want to say make whole, but we can't. We can't do anything remotely like that. We need to lift our Black communities up. And I hope that Ms. Campbell will find a way to leverage the city of Asheville's budget to do that. I, Ms. Williams has faith in you, so I shall too. I'd also like to remind council that this resolution bears a remarkable similarity to the July 2008 federal resolution. We can all see what that did. Um, and I'd like to finish by echoing Keith's comments. If we don't make policy that outlives this moment in time, our community is going to fail. Thank you.
Hi folks, um, thank you so much for your work. This is Mindy Allen, I live in North Asheville. And this will be brief, I just wanted to say, um, I appreciate the work that you're doing on, um, trying to move toward reparations, uh, and know that it's just a small first step. And I will be praying for y'all, that God will bless your work and, um, that the right things will happen for the folks that really need it. Um, so thank you, and that's it.
Hello, my name is Matt Shepherd.
Hello.
I, uh, agree with many of the, uh, previous callers. Um, uh, especially like to second the, the sentiments of David Greenson, who called in earlier. Um, and I would like to commend, uh, this council for taking on this immense and overdue task of reparations for the Black community of Asheville. Um, the harms have been outlined so well, uh, already. Um, and, uh, I appreciate that and seeing, uh, it was a moving moment to see, uh, Councilman Young, Councilman Young, um, speak of, like, read and apology and, uh, atonement to the community. Because in this community, in this nation, um, that is absolutely what is needed. Um, and we need to face the music, uh, of what has been done. And this is a small step towards doing that. And it's moving in, uh, taking leadership and being bold and stepping in a direction that will, um, you know, as the mayor said, it's not, uh, you know, the community, the, the larger community is not going to be 100% in lockstep with this. But I am 1 trillion percent in lockstep with this. And commend you for doing it and thank you for doing it, uh, on behalf of myself. Um, and, um, I look forward to, uh, what comes of it. And like some other people have said, keep pushing. Um, I'm no huge fan of the NFL, but I think that, I can't remember who it was on the Carolina Panthers. They had a motto a few years back that said, keep pounding. And I think that applies here as well. Uh, so thank you all, and, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a good day. All right, goodbye.
Hello, my name is Ryan. I live in West Asheville. Um, I'm going to keep this pretty short and sweet. Um, you know, this talks about committees and all this stuff, and, and that seems like a step, a, a step to the side. Um, what we really need is to listen to the number one demand of Black Asheville demand. And that is defunding the police by half, using that money, reinvesting it into the Black community in ways that make our entire community feel safer and feel heard and where we have our own power to make our own choices. It's pretty simple. All the rest of the stuff, it's great, you're recognizing racism from years, hundreds of years. It's a step, but it's hollow promises if you're not taking these direct action steps and especially listening to the Black community. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Robin. I live in, um, South Slip area of Asheville, witnessing, um, a lot of gentrification, uh, halt, grinded to a halt by COVID. But, um, still hearing and want to echo and thank everybody who's, especially Ryan, who just said exactly pretty much what I wanted to say, which is that until we acknowledge that one of the main aggressors and acts of oppression and violence against the Black community is the disgusting presence of the police. And until we fully head on address that and don't sidestep that issue, um, you can talk as much as you want about all the great short, medium, and long-term ideas. Um, but we have something right now that we can do. And until that starts happening, um, tangibly, in reality, I don't think that we're going to stop talking about it. So thanks for your work, please keep it up and please listen.
Yes, this is Eddie from West Asheville. Uh, it looks like I'm the only one calling tonight to disagree with this. Uh, I don't know if you realize, you have to realize that Black Lives Matter is a Marxist-supported organization. Uh, you've came to Asheville, you've tried to remove our, uh, statues that we have here for over a hundred years. We at this time will, and like we say, we are organized more, support the police protest. We, we, we are in a firm belief that, uh, there's three things that you have to do if you want to be raised out of poverty. If you've been raised in this, in Asheville or anywhere in the last 50 years, you know that, uh, the easiest thing to do is finish school, don't have any children until you graduate, and get a job and you're guaranteed not to be in poverty. This of just handing over to someone, uh, this amount of money, that this will not be- This of just handing over someone, uh, this amount of money, that this will not fix the issue. We are here to work with you to, we want a good community too, but we're not going to let a community go to a Marxist organization that does not support the police department. Is one of the biggest, uh, beliefs of Black Lives Matter is doing your way with the police department. That's not going to fly. Uh, we, like I say, we are at the moment right now, we are organized, we are organizing, uh, support the police, and, uh, we just cannot let this happen to our community. You're not getting any calls, and I just want to bring this up to you, you're not getting any calls, you may have got a lot of emails, but you're not getting a lot of calls because whoever tries to speak up against this, Black Lives, Black Lives Matter call them racist, they've called their jobs, they've had people get fired from their jobs over lives, and that Black Lives Matter is passing. So for us to have to stand up and do it this way, uh, this is not our fault. We want to go on record too to say that for two hundred years, we are not responsible for what happened two hundred years ago. We listened to, uh, things like white nationalism, white privilege, systemic racism. My white privilege is I grew up on a farm, I had eleven brothers and sisters, I baled hay, we milked cows, that is my white privilege. So that, uh, that doesn't fly. And like I say, I appreciate the job that you're doing, I want to see this community succeed, but at this time I am very upset. You ride down, you look through Asheville, and if you've been here for, let's say, let's say you've lived here over fifty, close to fifty years, legends can happen that it was a place you didn't go at night. It was one of the dirtiest, the nastiest places in Asheville. That is what it's turning to look to. We have graffiti written all over buildings, we have people that call graffiti murals. Now we're talking about writing graffiti in the streets. Uh, Asheville City Council is giving approval for this.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please share your name.
Yes, my name is Keith. I pretty much see I'm in the minority here. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, though. As I understand, you are proposing to give reparations to the black communities for slavery. I find this wrong in so many ways, and I strongly oppose it. The black people are not the only race that have been enslaved in America and around the world. All races have been enslaved at some point in time in man's history. Yes, I agree, the black race has been unduly affected and viciously abused by slavery in America. I think what the black people need is an apology from the Democratic Party, the way the Democratic Party has kept the black people from achieving prosperity. I and ninety-nine point nine percent of the people here in Asheville have not had anything to do with slavery of the past. I do not believe in putting the sins of the father on the sins of the son. I do believe the more, that more is needed to do to help the black community in America. I believe the Democratic Party are using the black people as the Democratic Party has used them in the past to cause further division in this great country. So I say no to reparations. I also say no to proposing to put Black Lives Matter mural painted around Pac Square. I see this as telling Black Lives Matter people, they can come to our city and there will be no consequences when they destroy private property, and you, mayor, will be held responsible for what these Black Lives Matter people do. We all know Black Lives Matter leaders are Marxists. We know, we, and all they want to do is destroy this country. Also, the Vance monument is not a monument of slavery, it is a monument from a man who did great things for Asheville and North Carolina. The man may not have been perfect, but who of us is? As the saying goes, for he who's without sin casts the first stone. I would not object to you putting a plaque on it telling future people about the good things and the bad things that the governor Vance did. Removing it is a nonstarter. Uh, I believe it is not for a few people, i.e. you, the mayor, and a handful of representatives, to make such a monumental decision. There is eighty thousand voters in Asheville. If you feel so strongly about these matters, then put it up for a vote to the people of Asheville. I don't believe you were elected to make, make these decisions.
Marxism is so scary. Oh, my God. Marxism means caring about other people, dude, get the fuck over it.
Cut it.
Uh, my name is Victoria, and I am a resident of Buncombe County. First of all, I would like to say thank you for what you're doing. Uh, I appreciate that you are acknowledging the community's response. I was glad to see the monument shrouded and the plaque removed. That's a great start. Um, but that being said, I know that you all have gotten close to a thousand responses in the past week or so, asking that you address the need for reparations here in Asheville, and I am really glad to hear that you all are in support of it, as we are way past due for the need to make reparations to black and colored communities in our city. And the folks leading the initiative at the RJC, as well as the people of Asheville, have made it pretty clear that what we're asking for when it comes to that, um, I'll reiterate that the demand is to defund APD by fifty percent, uh, reallocate that money into the community initiatives such as mental health crisis response teams, housing for the homeless, education, and of course reparations, including, but not limited to, creating a community reparations commission, supporting black startups and businesses, and eliminating the racial opportunity gap in Asheville City Schools. Uh, on the topic of the police response to the Black Lives Matter protests, the question is not whether or not the police department violated one of their policies or not, your community is telling you that they violated our rights. Therefore, the question is, how are we going to hold them accountable so that it never happens again? Chief Zack himself admitted that the reason there was force used is because their policies allowed officers to use their own discretion. It is clear that persecuting them based on the breaking of their own rules is not going to work. We need to do as was mentioned earlier and to have an outside investigation, but the people doing the investigation must be sourced outside of Asheville and be equally made up of black and colored people as well as women. The people in your community are hurting, they are scared, and they are angry, and they are looking to you as elected leaders to help us get justice and have peace of mind in our own community. That being said, I appreciate council members Smith and Haynes for working on an initiative to get body cam footage released to the public, and I look forward to working with you all to make this happen. But we need to do more. We need to defund the police, we need to have all officers that have had complaints filed against them in their career fired without pensions, and we need to make sure that the policies for officers are very explicit in stating that there should be absolutely no force used against citizens unless that citizen is a serious danger to the community. And while pertaining to crowd control, absolutely no force should be warranted because it is our First Amendment right, and you never know who is in the crowds, old people, children, disabled individuals, if the target cannot be clearly identified, there should be no force used, period. As many of you have mentioned, you will not still be holding office as most of these proposals go through, so that I hope that you will keep in mind as you move forward and make strong legislation that can be voted on, and I hope you consider joining the committees you're speaking of after your term is over. Thank you, have a lovely night.
We can hear you. Please share your name.
My name is Max. I live in the Asheville area, and I'm calling today to thank you for easily passing the resolution for reparations. It wasn't so hard, was it? And as first steps, um, always are, you know, it it's pretty simple to just say what you want to do and agree on that. So I'm glad you all managed to do that, but really, you really, really need to keep in mind that it's a first step, really even barely even a first step because you haven't even acknowledged the necessity to decrease the APD budget by fifty percent brought to you by your black citizens. The fact that you would talk about reparations without talking about that is incredible to me in this moment. It it's wild, really how much trouble you people seem to have with just listening to people, just listening to the black community members who live here and have been some, in in some cases priced out of the area, right? And yet still you ask for people to say where they live when they call in the city council. And you, you say that, oh, we can't have, you know, the, our own Asheville city government be involved at all with, with the study to see if the APD did something wrong. Well, why don't you just listen to the black community of Asheville, and you'll have your answer. Yeah, they did something wrong, okay? You don't need to spend thousands of dollars to pay a bunch of white people to tell you that, no, actually, they didn't do anything against their rules. Listen to your community. It really is not that difficult. So, yes, I would really urge every single person who's listening to this and on city council to read the Black Asheville demands and heed their words and do what they're asking, because this is your community and this is who the community is rallying behind. If you don't cut APD's budget by fifty percent in the, uh, in September, you're going to have serious consequences on your hands, and I don't understand why it is so difficult for y'all to just make something happen. I mean, your stalling tactics, delaying constantly, creating committees, it's getting so, so old, and no one buys it anymore. No one believes you when you say, when you pay your lip service, and then you just put things off continuously. You, you can't, for some reason, wrap your minds around the idea of community accountability, and that is dumbfounded. And I definitely knew it.
Hi, my name is Katie Hudson. I'm a resident of Asheville. Um, I just want to say that I thank you for, when you do pass the motion, passing this motion and bringing it to us today. Um, it would have been great if we could also have gotten the tear cancer, uh, banned, but you know, the, that was done is done. Um, I want to say that this document, though, how great it is, is only like, without, i- if you don't pass any other resolutions, this is like a functional alcoholic admitting they're an alcoholic and then never going to meetings. I would know because I'm that guy. Like, really, we're going to say, we're, Asheville is functionally racist still and not actually recovering from racism if we don't actually make policy that will last. You should treat this as a crisis of sovereignty for the city of Asheville. You are losing the people's will and consent to be governed by you if you don't respond. This is what emergency sessions were made for. You need to listen to the people or you're going to have, like other people have said, you, this is the time to act and you're gonna, it, it, I don't see, uh, uh, hopeful future within democracy if we can't even, uh, make these clear calls to defund the police happen. Um, thank you for your time, and, uh, thank you for at least starting the process of lip service of reparations.
Hello? We can hear you. Please share your name.
My name is Samantha Simpson. Some people call me Sammy. Uh, Brian and Shanika know me. Um, as for the others, uh, let's see, Vijay, I've served you at the Renaissance, at the Rotary Club several times and held my tongue. Um, the mayor and Vijay came to my neighborhood for a meet and greet and did not meet me. When I told her about issues, she said, email me. Let's see, who else? Gwen, I've made your sandwiches at Urban Orchard, and the rest of you I don't think I've met in person. Now, I'm very emotional about this because I'm supposed to be in bed because I have a fever, but I just want to tell you, I live in this South Side community, and there's a lot of work you need to do, especially with our schools. And I just want to say, I talk a lot, and I know I only have three minutes, and I would have been down there sooner, but you don't make city council meetings very accessible because they're at school pickup time, and I can't afford parking. However, I would like to make this real personal real quick. I think you all know who my son Freedom is. He had an issue at Asheville City Schools last year. He asked for, the first thing he asked for was an opportunity to apologize because he said the word niga with an A on the end of it, and that went viral. Ash, Freedom has been in Asheville City Schools since kindergarten, and we have been denied help at every step of the way, and we are white. And don't tell me it's because I didn't go to school because I have an AA and an ASA from AB Tech, and I was educated in Philadelphia, I was educated in Brooklyn, my mother gave me an inheritance, I lost it in two thousand and eight when I moved to Rosedaleton and bought a house, so don't tell me that. Also, I'm a fourth generation immigrant family from Lithuania, and I just want to say, I, I, black brothers and sisters, and we've got a lot of work to do, and I thank you guys for being here, I thank the Racial Justice Coalition for this work, I thank Just Economics for all their work, I've been on the board for the last five years, I took their Voices of Economic Training as a volunteer before that, and, uh, all of you that are stepping down or stepping off, goodbye, we don't need you, please elect Kim Roney and Nicole Townsend, and, uh, I think this is a historic day, and I'm very emotional, I'm very excited, and I know you have to have all these committees, but please make them be locals that matter, that have lived here, and I've tried the living wage thing, I worked for two living wage employers, and I still can't make it with my family. I still can't, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry to get emotional, you all know how to contact me, you know my connections, but this is very important. It, it's everything, it's everything from transportation to trees. My next door neighbor's kid is eleven years old, and he's on probation for stealing sneakers. This whole family, I've heard their story for a long time, and it's, it's not okay. It's not, and my children are going to your schools.
Sorry, okay. Um, hey, staff, do we have any other callers in the queue?
Mayor, it looks like we have about sixteen people in the queue.
Okay, council, we've, um, we've reached the hour mark. Would you like to continue hearing public comment, or would you like to vote on this um, resolution? We do immediately following this item enter the public comment portion of the agenda, and, uh, callers in the queue could speak at that time as well. And callers in the queue could speak at that time as well.
I would suggest just rolling them into the public comment.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree.
Okay. Anyone have an objection to concluding the one hour comment period for this resolution at this time? Okay, seeing there aren't any objections. Council, we already have a motion to adopt this resolution. And unless anyone has any further comment, I will take a roll call vote, okay? Okay. Vice Mayor Whitmore.
Aye.
Councilman Haynes.
Aye.
Councilman Kapoor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, the resolution passes. Thank you. Council, we are now at the end of our agenda with the informal discussion and public comment. We do not have a closed session this evening, so this will conclude our agenda this evening. And we already heard that we do have more callers in the queue. Callers, if you wish to provide comment under the public comment portion of the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. Please identify yourself. And again, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Staff, if you'll help manage the callers in the queue.
Hi there, city council, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please share your name.
My name is David. I live in North Asheville. I wanted to state that while the formation of a commission to investigate reparations in the city of Asheville is significant, it means nothing without immediate action. At this point in time, there are five primary demands that have been circulated by the organization Boots on the Ground Asheville. And the first of these demands is to defund the Asheville Police Department by 50%. The first of the demands issued by Black Asheville, the other organization that has issued demands in the city, is to defund the Asheville Police Department by 50%. As we approach the budget hearing and as we enter this likely, long and fraught conversation about reparations in the city, it's clear to me that the money for reparations and the money for investing in our community, especially our black community, and closing the opportunity gaps in our schools, making mental health care accessible and drug treatment accessible, challenging homelessness in the city, it is absolutely imperative that, at this upcoming budget, city council prove and demonstrate its real commitment to immediate action within the terms of those who are already elected in office to defund the Asheville Police Department by 50%. If city council is unwilling to take this step, it demonstrates, you know, like, a lack of commitment to real action. It demonstrates a willingness to throw down some words, create committees, push things back, and wait for the public uproar and furor to diminish and go away. But that's not sufficient. At this point in time, what I'm asking you all to do is, as you talk about reparations at the council and as you form this committee, to empower the committee to use money divested from the Asheville Police Department and to make it a priority of the city of Asheville to find alternatives to our current form of policing and use money divested from the Asheville Police Department to fund those initiatives. Mobile crisis units, housing for those who are unhoused, finally closing our opportunity gap, which is an active demonstration of the way systematic racism manifests in our city, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you again for taking this initial step towards reparations for our community and writing insofar as we're able injustices that we, as a majority white city in the South, will forever be culpable in, despite what some previous commentators have said about the sins of the fathers not going to the children. Sorry, I was making fun of that person in case you couldn't tell. We have to take action that is real and meaningful and we have to take action while you are still in office, because who knows what will happen in the election. Thank you for your time. Thank you for taking this initial step.
Hi, my name is Melanie Noy. I am a resident of Asheville. Our community is so wary of the vague promises in this resolution. We've been demanding that APD gets defunded by at least 50% and that's the number one reparation that is expected of you at this moment. Do not allow APD to use money from other budget lines either. Task forces, painting the streets, and the proposed reparations will not suffice. You can take down Vance without wasting our time and money. You can divest from the police department by at least 50% and invest it in black communities. You really, really can. Divesting from APD also means removing APD from schools, universities, hospitals, and ending the occupation of black and brown communities, also public housing and unhoused people. Community engagement divisions won't work and body cams are shown not to work. Please do not waste time on this either. Divesting from APD also means demilitarizing them and prohibiting them from using tear gas, rubber bullets, assault rifles, and all weapons of war, including the 1033 program and military training. Investigating whether this was legal or not, to use excessive force in chemical warfare on citizens is a joke, especially looking at the investigative team. All monuments, statues, and street names dedicated to the Confederacy have also got to go and they need to go now. Covering up Vance Monument with the shroud is a huge waste of time and money as well. Remember also, moving forward, that this is ancestral Cherokee land that was stolen and then built by stolen people. And in my opinion, whatever replaces Vance needs to reflect that. You have the ability to do all this immediately. Please show the community and the children who are watching that you're able to help us create a new world. Defund APD by at least 50% and fund our black communities. Take down Vance and do it now. These are what tangible reparations look like. We are all watching and will continue to make noise until this happens.
Hello, my name is Shawnee Lavender and I have been a resident of Asheville for 23 years. First, I want to thank Councilman Young for bringing forward the resolution about reparations. And thank you to all council members for voting in favor of this resolution tonight as well. While I know this is only a beginning, I'm grateful that you are calling us to be better and do better, to live up to American ideals. I'm grateful that you are calling all of us as individuals and as members of organizations to make real, concrete steps to right the wrong actions in the distant and recent past and those that continue in our present day. I'm grateful that you're refusing to wait any longer to take meaningful, sustainable, and systemic change. I am grateful that most Ashvillians are in favor of reparations and urge all hesitant or resistant white residents to view this as the way to atone for the sins of our ancestors and also to finally dismantle unjust systems that continue to harm our black neighbors. I am grateful for this opportunity for us to work together to create a community where all who call Asheville home can have true safety, financial security, mental and physical health, and the freedom to flourish. Thank you.
Hello, this is Andrew Prosek. I have a lot of information, so I'm going to go quick, so please bear with me. I'm sorry, I'm kind of glad Marxism was mentioned a couple times. A bit about my background, I'm a sociologist with your stereotypical Marxist professor at two universities for about a decade. My specific area of research and teaching was riots to revolutions, the sociology of collective action and social movements. I know a good deal about social movements, both from 20 years of activism inside as well as academically and then a decade of running a business in downtown Asheville helped open my eyes to a completely different reality. But I want to talk about the issue of reparations in the present context and why it's problematic, without discussing the obvious, that a small municipality should not be doing the job and spending the money that should be the job of state, county, and national governments. Nonetheless, we know that reparations in the present context came here because of the BLM movement in conjunction with the police brutality movement. They claim to be decentralized, but that's far from the case. It has a leadership and that leadership got its teeth wet at the social forum in 2010. And I'm very familiar with those conferences. It's the same exact year that in Detroit, Venezuela was there and they revealed plans for an Afro-descendant decade. And reparations and defunding police are an intricate part of the Bolivarian platform, a program crafted by Chuchu Garcia, the right-hand man of Nicolas Maduro. I have a student that's working on a research project on this specific data right now who just met with a senator who's on the Intelligence Committee. And I can give you a lot more information in the future. Nonetheless, I'm familiar with these meetings at Atlanta. They were Venezuelan revolutionaries. A lot of people were smitten. In 2011, Obol Tometi went to Jakarta for the International Forum. Again, there's deep ties to Venezuela. They sponsor a lot of the meetings. And there's a reason that that movement is pushing an agenda that's identical to the Bolivarian agenda of Venezuela. So while a lot of students, activists, and leaders go to these meetings to become better leaders of their movements, better socialists, better communists, they're being used by those who sponsor the movements. And those are, the people are in the intelligence apparatus of Venezuela. Let's be frank, Venezuela doesn't want to see a happy little Norway here in the United States. We're their number one enemy and their main goal is destabilization. That's why they've picked a platform specifically that pits one part of the population against another within the bowels of their enemy. In the civil rights movement during the 60s, MLK and others moved towards the Poor People's Movement and discussing things as a matter of class because they recognized that basing such programs on race generates animosity and it's unsustainable. It's not just blacks that were squeezed from Asheville. If you look at a lot of the original poor white residents, they got screwed too. And this should apply to a lot more people. Yes, I'm fully in support of an economic program that would have the intended effects of reparations, no doubt. But those talking about reparations now are unwittingly becoming dupes for Venezuela and their planned destabilization projects for the United States. That's what they want to do through these movements. They don't want what's best for us. There's no denying where this agenda in its present form is sourced and ideas.
Hello, my name is Tyler Jackson, tenured citizen of Asheville. Many callers have spoken articulately and passionately. I echo and support their calls for the council to defund the police, reallocate the funds into community organizations, social programs, reimagine public safety, and listen to the citizens of the community, and hold substantive and meaningful dialogues with Asheville black population about how and where those funds can best be applied. The will of Asheville's population has clearly stated and reiterated over and over again these desires. This public hearing, a million times over, for many years that I've lived here, listen, act, and stand with your public, do the right thing.
I'm going to take a minute. I got in the speaker queue. Yes, hello, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, thank you. Please share your name.
Yes, my name is Michaela. So, there's a lot to talk about because on the public comment section, not just about reparations, but on reparations, these are good promises, but they lack any teeth in their current iteration. I applaud the start and hope that this convinces other cities that this is a needed movement forward, that we need to continue this work and lead by example, so way, not only are our citizens taken care of, but hopefully, we start a movement that takes care of all the citizens of this country. We are watching and we will make sure this gets done. On reparations, land makes up for the majority of wealth and assets of working-class people. And how much land do we need to steal from black and brown people before we realize who that hurts the most and maybe give it back? We need to defund the APD and redirect this money towards public health and safety. Redirect this money through the black community, both directly in payments and by funding systems to truly help our black and brown siblings. On chemical weapons, why are we not voting to ban the chemical weapon CS gas? What justification is there on denying and not acting immediately? This is not a question about policy. This is not a question about effectiveness. We know CS gas does not work as crowd control. This is absolutely proven. The only thing CS gas is effective at is to harm and intimidate the voices that dissent against those in power and those who all hold the monopoly on violence. And as a last little bit on the investigation that hopefully stays shelved and goes away, we don't need moral advice from lawyers of all people. Why are we going to ask what's acceptable rules and role of the police is from them? If we do need them, the money should come directly from the APD and we need to ask the right question, discrepancies in how the police targeted protests, not what procedures were followed. We don't need retribution, we need change. We know that the procedures are broken inherently and we don't need that advice from lawyers. You are our lawmakers. Change our laws. I'm done.
Hi, my name is Jeff DeSeego. I've been a resident of Asheville for 10 years. I'm going to try to keep this as brief as I possibly can. And I just want to stay in support of, well, a majority of people, and by majority, I mean about 90 to 95% of your callers who sent this night. The idea of reparations is great. I'm glad it's finally on the table and something you're considering. But this needs to be devoid of lip service and put into action. And Boots on the Ground Asheville has made it very clear, listed demands, the first one being, defund the Asheville Police Department by 50%. In addition to that, you need to remove Asheville Police and the police presence from hospitals, from schools, and from public places that they use to racially profile black and brown children. In addition to that, you need to reallocate that funding from the police directly to black communities in favor of starting businesses and supporting them. The Vance Monument, I can't believe that you wasted so much money covering something that you absolutely do have the capacity to remove. Right now, you could do this. Like, you could do this within the week. Please do that. But you just wasted thousands of our dollars putting a box. It looks ridiculous and, no, no, that does nothing. It's performative. In addition to that, the chief needs to step down or he needs to be fired. In addition to pretty much all of the police officers who are showing aggressive force, there needs to be a real thorough extensive investigation into Asheville Police and their very real connections to Proud Boys, to Ku Klux Klan members within the area, and their affiliations, which have long been present within this area. Yeah, I said it. That's exactly what needs to happen, because it's true. And this talk about defunding the police is nice, it's wonderful, but I really think you need to listen to what the one caller earlier reiterated, to reimagine the way we go about navigating community conflict and safety. Like, this has to just be the beginning. Reparations is great. Defunding the police needs to be the first start of abolishment. We need to actually listen to what Minneapolis has been doing. You have the power to change these laws. You have the power to, like, do things beyond just performative gestures. You have the power to, like, do things beyond just performative gestures. And at this point, yeah, people are not gonna settle for it. We've been watching you, and we're gonna continue to watch you, and we have the capacity to flip things upside down. Your, your greatest mistake is thinking that the residents here are, are kindness is, is an exemplification of weakness, because we really could flip every one of these gentrified businesses upside down if we wanted to. But we're giving you the option to actually do something, put some, put forth resources to help people, so that we don't have to go to that length.
Hi, my name's Grace Martinez, and I'm an Asheville city resident. I'm so glad to see this resolution passing tonight. I think this apology is long overdue, and the work ahead is incredibly important and urgent. I'm really inspired by my fellow community members and all of their engagement that is occurring around this, and especially of the black leadership that has been leading the way through all of this. We know that the first step has to be reiterated over and over again tonight to defund the Asheville Police by 50%. I really appreciated the comments of Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Young. Mr. Young touched on a piece that is integral in this discussion, capital. We know that racial capitalism is the system that our city and nation was built upon. Police departments exist to protect that capital, once to make sure enslaved people didn't escape their enslavement, and now continuing with protection of property of the elite. While recognizing this momentous resolution, we must remember that actions speak louder than words. We know that urban renewal continues today in Asheville. Just look at the recent removal of Lee Walker Heights and the current plans for the I-26 Connector Project, which disproportionately takes even more black land from the Burton Street community. That's a $1 billion project that's far greater than the $30 million allocated to the Asheville Police. We need to give our black community land and capital. We need to give our city contracts, including the investigators for the protest, if that occurs, to black-owned businesses. We need to immediately ban the use of so-called non-lethal weapons immediately. We need to see true accountability. We need budget transparency. I have not been able to find anywhere on the city's website any true information about our budget or the process that lies ahead, even though Campbell spoke about it earlier tonight. We are ready to engage with you on this. We are here, and we are not going away. We have the data about how APD operates, and we just saw it on mass scale during the protest, where they violently attacked community members who were just trying to speak up for the rights of all people, and black and brown people in our community who have been affected by these issues for over 400 years. We will continue to support you if you can support us, and we are here and ready to work with you. We will be ensuring that this resolution and investigation lead to true tangible change. Thank you for the work that those of you are doing to support us, and I look forward to continuing to work together.
Hello, my name's Evan Garner. I've been in Asheville on and off since I was born. My family's been here for generations. My grandfather was the postmaster of this town. Most of us hail out of Old Fort. Been in politics as well, and also have been working with other organizations that exist in these so-called United States, like, that are, that are reparations movements based purely on extracting resource out of the white community and into programs and funding economic development. So I'm a little familiar with this. I wanna salute everybody for, for supporting reparations and for the city council even having this meeting, but you have an opportunity now to set a precedent that hasn't been set before, ever. You might be the first to do this, and how it lays out is gonna be important, and the people you need to talk to, but it's been done before. If you look at campaigns like that ran in St. Pete here in the past couple of years, I believe it was Eartha Achille Cannon for City Council, and Anne Hirsch for Mayor of St. Pete. Both of them ran on a platform of reparations to the black community and economic development, and reinvesting in that. Also, platforms like Black Community Control of the Police. So when you're defunding the police and dismantling certain parts of that department that just are not necessary, because the police usually act as an occupying force in all-black neighborhoods, more like, you know, there, there is like guards, armed guards. So you give the black community control over who comes in and polices them, how they're hired and fired, and hold them accountable to that community while we're funding them, and while, because we've all heard this story, and I don't care if you're a capitalist or a socialist, there's no, you're never gonna get around the point, and here's one that Marx missed for our socialist, you know, whatever he was, I don't know, some academic. The primitive accumulation of capital was stealing people and land. One of the first known commodities on the New York Stock Exchange were bodies, not just slaves, not just commodities, pure literal currency. Nothing would exist if that wouldn't have happened the way it did, and nobody got their 40 acres and a mule, but poor white people got land grants in the 1860s. Huh? What happened around the New Deal? What about all that redlining that's been going on for centuries? And you have an opportunity now to take one step forward, one, and I guarantee feet follow after that, if everybody's standing up and walking towards something. And I unite with what everybody said so far about defunding or abolishing, but I also support black community of control of the peace. Good night, thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Larson. I live in Monfort, and I am really disappointed with the city of Asheville that you voted for that resolution, supporting reparations to Asheville's black community. Give us a break. The document that was submitted appears to be boilerplate, written from a victimized perspective. Did council get that from Black Lives Matter or some Marxist group that sent it to all the cities? To think that there would be some city that would take it and boilerplate it and put it on the council as an agenda? I am not only shocked, I am disappointed. It demands apologies and making demands, creating divisiveness? Hey, Asheville's a community of over 92,000 people, 13% of which are black? Okay, it's a socioeconomic issue, it's not only a black issue. Did you hear the woman who called in earlier about her kids going to city schools? Okay? The reparation document does nothing to unify our community and is presented from the biased, victimized, black perspective. City council represents all of us, not just the black community. This document is looking for entitlements. Okay, the reparations document is accusatory, extremist, militant, and divisive. If council feels so strongly about this, take it to the voters, put it on a ballot so all of the citizens of Asheville can decide. I really disagree with you spending your time and our taxpayer dollars on this. I can't believe it. What about the back, black community? What about their personal responsibility? What about 70% of black babies are born out of wedlock, and the fathers leave the home? Talk to kindergarten teachers in public schools at the city of Asheville, and they'll tell you the parents are not involved with the kid's education, okay? It, it has to go beyond what they think they lost years ago. I'm all for uniting the community, but this is very divisive. There were several people who called that were, that were against this reparation to Asheville's black community, okay? Asheville, we have a black city manager, a black police chief, we have a black sheriff in the county, we have two black councilmen, that's an indication that blacks can succeed in Asheville, but to dump this on all of us white smoke, I think it's offensive. So I'm really disappointed, and I think there'll be a group of us who will be protesting this in a major way. Put it on the ballot.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Please share your name.
Uh, Bobby Smith. I'm a longtime resident of Asheville, born here in 19... Born here in 1973. Reparations, a couple of callers called in. I agree with some, disagree with a lot. The Vance Monument is just, I think it's a fluke. Leave it, I like it, it's beautiful, it doesn't have a face to it. I don't symbolize it with anything but Asheville. If you wanna put a face on racism, a face that holds Asheville back, let's say the Biltmore Estate, let's say the Grove Park area, let's say the Paul Ellis firm that creates college jobs that are plastered form on the corner of Mills Gap and Sweet and Creed, that could have been a useful job, a useful factory, but we built non-useful apartments. So reparations, a lot of work. City council, a lot of work. But I think that we could start with Stoner Road and the Oakley Community in the middle of Biltmore, where City Council put the district apartments. If we could get speed control over there, if we could take the last remaining black community in Asheville and show that community that we can change it. Traffic control is a problem there. Ken Putnam has told me that he would work with me to put speed breakers there to kind of handle that, which we're running the black community out of there, and I feel that once that's gone, there's no more black in Asheville. The block is gone, Eagle Street is gone, Reed Center's gone, Lee Walker Heights is That should have been a historic site, but Asheville sold the property, gave it to a for-profit company, and now they're gonna make unaffordable housing. There's no more native Ashvilleans here, and Asheville is now just a, it's a mockery. And I think that City Council has a chance to change it, give the block back to the black community, revamp what low-income housing is left here.
Hi, my name is Max, reading off of the Black Asheville Demands website. We demand a divestment from the police and investment in black communities. 50% of the APD's budget should be invested in long-term safety strategies, including supporting black startups and businesses, eliminating the racial opportunity gap in Asheville schools, and funding an all-civilian oversight committee with the power to hold the APD and individual officers accountable. Did you get that? That one was really important. Next is reparations. We demand repair for the past and continuing harms inflicted on Asheville's black community. We demand that Asheville City Government remove the Vance and Robert E. Lee monuments and replace them with monuments that honor the many black Ashvilleans who have built this city. See, there you go, look, all these answers that you're looking for are right here. We demand that streets named after former slave owners also be replaced with names of historic local black leaders. End the war on black people. We demand not just individual accountability for officers after lethal or violent use of force, but for accountability for the entire Asheville Police Department. We demand an end to the systemic harms inflicted on all black people, including black, trans, queer, and gender non-conforming people. That was so easy, now all you have to do is those things. This is a nice quote on their website, too. "When black people get free, everybody gets free." That's Alicia Garza, a co-founder of the National Black Lives Matter Movement. And you know what? I think maybe she might be a Marxist. Boom, boom, boom. If that was the first time that you actually heard that, I would suggest that you go on the website and, and look a little bit more into what it says, because it's really answering a lot of the questions that y'all seem to be having, and it could maybe help you get over your fear of listening to your constituents, which I'm pretty sure is actually what your job is. So let me know what you think.
Hi, my name is Tan, and I live in West Asheville. And I'm calling to say the reparations start now, and that means defunding the Asheville Police Department by at least 50%. There is a separation between defunding the police and reparations for me as a black woman, and there's also some things that City Council can do currently, like also working against TDA instead of working with TDA, the Department of, what is it called? The Department of Tourism, to open, back up the city of Asheville while we're in the middle of a pandemic. You are actively causing harm by opening the city back up to black and Latinx communities. So while it's great that we're talking about reparations, just remember that we are still engaging in harm by opening the city back up in the middle of a pandemic. Thank you.
Mayor, that is the last in the queue for folks that appear to still be connected. There are a few that seem to have left, so we may wanna give just a minute if that is not the case, and they want to hang up and call back, but other than that, we've reached all that are in the queue.
I'm muted, okay. Dawa?
Yes.
Sorry, you were speaking.
Yes, we had one person reconnect.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please share your name.
Hi, my name's Taylor, I live in West Asheville. I've only lived here for about a year. It's my first meeting that I've listened to, and I'm actually very impressed, thanks for passing this. I just wanna say, when you are looking into what to do, I do want to encourage you to, when it makes sense, to formulate policies that don't specifically refer to race, but that in the same way that people of color are disproportionately impacted in a negative way by laws that are on the books... in a negative way by laws that are on the books now, to disproportionately impact people of color in a positive way with your policies, and furthermore, to, to prove to us that that's actually what's happening. So for something like funding black startups, clearly you have to be black to have a black startup, and I think that makes sense. But when it comes to things like housing, I think that it's important that, again, you, you know, we've managed to disproportionately impact black people in really negative ways with laws that don't actually mention being black. Um, so we can do the same thing in a positive way and disproportionately impact black people in a very positive way with laws that, that don't require that you're black. Um, again, for certain cases, it certainly makes sense to do that, black startups and that sort of thing. But, uh, just a little bit of guidance, my opinion. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, Council, that, Dawa, I think, does that conclude the, the folks in the queue, I assume, at this point?
Uh, there's a few more that have reconnected.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, please share your name.
Hi, my name's Rachel. I'm calling tonight to request that a minimum of fifty percent of the Asheville Police Department's budget is given back to the black community. This resolution is a crucial first step in a long overdue process. I urge you to take responsibility for the pivotal role the city government has played in hundreds of years of oppression of black people in this region, from slavery to urban renewal. The city must commit to concrete plans for assuring that those harms don't continue and for repairing the damage that has been done. Now that you have voted in favor of reparations, will you pledge to take meaningful actions that will directly uplift the black people of this city? I encourage all of you to be brave and radical in the remainder of your time in office because this entire community needs real, sustainable change. Please continue your work with social justice and equality at the top of your mind and at the center of your heart. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ursula, I live in West Asheville. Um, I've heard a couple of people call in tonight and thank you guys or congratulate you, but I just want to let you know that I personally am honestly pretty disgusted with a lot of what I've seen from you guys. In particular, it really rubbed me the wrong way to see the way that, uh, you guys, Brian Haynes as the only honorable person on this entire council who brought something real to the table and asked for you guys to ban chemical weapons that are banned under the Geneva Convention, and you guys couldn't even do that? Like, what is wrong with you? Okay? That's, that's not okay. This reparations thing is great, I'm glad to see it come through, it means nothing if we don't see that money come out of the police department and then put into our communities. It means absolutely nothing without fifty percent cuts to the Asheville Police Department. And unless we see that, we are gonna take to the streets again. And you guys aren't gonna know peace until we know justice. I'm gonna say that every time I call in until you listen to me. I'm done.
Hey, y'all, this must be the hardest y'all have ever worked, working some late hours tonight, huh? Y'all must be getting real tired of all this. To be honest with you, I haven't even got anything to say except to reiterate what everyone else is saying and to kill some time on this line, because I know you cowards will take any chance you can get to call this meeting early. So I'll pass the mic on because I know there's other people in the line, but y'all all suck. Fuck you, bye.
Hey, y'all, uh, this is Darlene Zarmy. Had a lot of different commentary tonight. Um, I appreciate y'all hanging on and hearing everyone out and, uh, the passage of the resolution tonight. Um, I just wanted to raise a few thoughts, um, around a lot of this stuff. I'd like to uphold the Black Asheville Demands, absolutely. I'm all for, um, reallocating money out of the police department.
Uh, hello, can y'all hear me all right?
We can hear you, please share your name.
Sure, uh, thank you so much. My name is, uh, Kenneth Fisher, I live up in Weaverville, um, and, uh, worked and lived in Asheville for about the last seventeen years. Um, want to thank y'all for, for passing the resolution on reparations, um, and also for, uh, as I understand it, tabling the conversation around hiring a private firm to look at the police department. Um, I want to invite everybody, this may seem totally ridiculous, but I want to invite everybody to just take a nice deep breath, because I've been on here watching and listening this whole time, it's been a real long meeting, and, um, I, I hope that y'all can hear what I'm about to say, so I just want to get you, uh, settled a little bit there. Um, I fully support the Black Asheville Demands, um, I also support the, um, reparations resolution. Um, I want to point out, you know, what a couple people have pointed out is that that's a first step of many, and that, um, not to be too creepy, but, you know, I'll be watching, and I know a lot of other people will be too, and I'll be calling, and I'll be emailing, and I'll be, um, leaving voicemails for all of you every time, which is what I do. Um, and, um, I do that out of care, uh, and I know that a lot of other people do that out of care, too, even, even sometimes when people are coming in a rageful way, they're, they're trying to come from care, that's just being human, I guess. Um, but what I want to tell y'all is that, in the time that I've lived here, uh, my understanding is that the African-American population has decreased by over fifty percent, um, and that I've, I've been a part of that without knowing it for a long time. I first moved into West Asheville, um, bought a house there with my ex-wife in, uh, two thousand and six, and, um, didn't know anything about the history of that neighborhood at that time, and found out about it afterwards, and was pretty mortified. Um, can't say that I practiced reparations at that time by, like, giving my house away or anything like that, um, but I did my best to continue to learn, as I imagine a lot of y'all are, too. And the, the thing I want to have land for y'all is that in my time here in the last four years, um, I've personally known three African-Americans who have left Asheville, uh, who are, you know, roughly in my age range, age range, uh, between twenty and thirty-five because of the, um, implicit racism that they've experienced, um, because of the level of gentrification and the lack of, uh, kind of cohesion among the communities, the, you know, the, the overdevelopment causing, um, kind of a capitalist frenzy where everyone's just doing their best to survive, uh, at least those of us.
Hey, this is Darlene, uh, I think I, I think I got cut off a second ago, but, um, if you can hear me now, uh, thank y'all for hanging on and hearing out the community on this. Um, I obviously am in support of all Black Asheville Demands, um, all in support for reallocating funding away from the police department. Uh, I think what the person who was speaking before me, you know, was starting to go into is just the need for, um, different kind of solutions, different kinds of thinking, um, than we've had before in this town. And, um, you know, there, there are many ways, um, to do this work. I think the time for, um, hiding in the back corner of rooms, um, when community is expressing themselves about issues they've been facing, um, is not the kind of leadership we need right now. I have seen, um, some of you up there hide, um, and...
I remember seeing you.
Sorry?
Uh, please, please proceed, my apologies.
Oh, that's okay, uh, cool. So, yeah, I was just saying that I have seen some of you hide, um, in uncomfortable situations with community in this town, unable to speak, and unable to address in the moment or in a timely fashion the reality of the situations that Black Asheville has been living in and that people of color of, in Asheville have been living in. And I'm saying that if that is the leadership that you want to presume and continue leading with, it's time to step aside and to hand, hand your positions of power over. And in order to really change the dynamics in this community, there needs to be a deepening in, of the bench of Black Asheville, of POC Asheville. And that means intentional investment in, in leadership, in mentorship, in training programs, and not just being okay with the rooms that folks have been sitting in up to this point. And so there's a real need for a compensation for people's time, you know, I've seen in this community over and over again, people are relied upon to deliver information, to show up in meeting spaces, to do all these things, they need to be paid for their time and valued. So with the creation of this task force and any other things that move forth in that way, please pay people for their time. Um, beyond that, you heard many different, many, many different views this evening, and if you're doing things like, you know, removing monuments, doing murals, the way that we received the call about the state of emergency, I was so impressed, and I said, wow, that's how you get the word out in an emergency, obviously. Well, this is an emergency, we're in an emergency in America, people are being hung, and please treat it as such. Educate your community.
Hi there, uh, first of all, I would like to, uh, give a brief shout-out to, uh, Congress People Haynes, uh, Smith, and to a lesser extent, Young. Um, you all need to take the gloves off, swing for the fences, uh, you know, that's what we're here for, uh, and if you do that, the community here will back you up one hundred percent. Uh, it is not enough to just say some pretty words, although that is somewhat appreciated. I would like to call, uh, attention to the fact that during the, uh, or in the resolution that was passed this evening, um, you used the language that the city of Asheville makes amends for. Um, and I would like to point out that at this point, you have not made amends for anything. Uh, you can begin to make amends for it, you can commit yourself to making amends for it, but passing the words you made amends for does absolutely nothing for any communities who have been disproportionately affected by economic racism and other forms of systemic racism. Um, I would additionally like to call attention to your rules of decorum, or for whatever reason you were cutting off people for using what some might consider profane language. Um, there's a good possibility that might actually be unconstitutional based on the, uh, Cohen versus California case heard by the Supreme Court in nineteen seventy-one, which found that, um, profane speech is in fact protected. Um, so I would like you to, at the very least, uh, post your rules of decorum, which are available at this point nowhere on the internet that is easily searchable, um, and moving forward, to consider the fact that people are justifiably outraged with the prolonged mistreatment of communities of color. Uh, additionally, I would like to say, um, with this, this, uh, resolution that you have passed, Congressman Smith, or not Congressman, I apologize, uh, Councilperson Smith, Councilperson Haynes, a great way to actually put your money where your mouth is here, uh, would be to directly tie financial investments into communities of color, uh, to the police department budget. You could legislate that the police department budget will be equal to or less than funds directly injected into communities of color who need support. Uh, that would be a concrete way to ensure that this is more than lip service and to ensure that we can move forward in these regards. Uh, lastly, I would like to call out our, uh, city manager here. Um, you have the direct power under the Asheville Charter to make changes in the way that our policing structure is organized. You have direct power and control over the hiring and firing of all positions within the Asheville Police Department. Uh, I would urge council folks to encourage our city manager to ensure that those actions are taken, beginning with the cutting of fifty percent of the police department budget.
...in the way that our policing structure is organized. You have direct power and control...
Uh, caller, Brooklyn's McCoy, it looks like, uh, yes, we can hear your television in the background, you're currently live in the meeting.
...our city manager to ensure that those actions are taken, beginning with the fifty percent of the police department budget.
One more time, caller, Brooklyn's McCoy, you're currently live in the meeting.
Uh, caller, Brooklyn's McCoy, it looks like, uh, we can hear you in the background.
Mayor, that was the last caller in the queue.
Okay, thank you, Dawa. Um, Council, uh, that concludes our agenda this evening. Again, we don't have a closed session, uh, this evening. Um, are there any, um, other comments or announcements or questions before we close it up?
Mayor, did you want to make an announcement about the July twenty-eighth meeting?
Oh, sorry, thank you, Maggie, for reminding me. Um, so on July twenty-eighth, our plan is to meet, um, at the Civic Center, uh, AKA Cherokee, Cherokee Harris Center, Asheville. Um, and we will, um, uh, still allow folks to, of course, uh, submit comments to us in writing, or leave us voicemail messages if you don't feel comfortable attending in person. Um, otherwise, we will try to accommodate all those who want to attend in person with proper social distancing and safety measures taken. So, see everyone, uh, July twenty-eighth, um, in person, so that will be exciting. Okay, this concludes our meeting, and we are adjourned.